Member Jones here. Member Stanton. Member Hickson here. Member Baxley.
Here.
Member Langendorf here. Vice President Exum.
Here.
President Palowski.
Here. We do have a quorum. Are there any additions or corrections or modifications to tonight's agenda? Nope. So we continue on the citizen's statements. If anybody wishes to make a statement for the board, there are these goldenrod sheets at the back of the room. If you could fill that out and hand it to Recording Secretary Lori Johnson. You can get into the queue. We have, I think, ten so far, starting with Anna Mendoza.
Andrea. Good evening. My name is Anna Mendoza, and my testimony is about why it may not be the best idea to have twenty-six students in a dual-language class. I'm going to be talking about the second pillar of dual-language programs, which is bilingualism and biliteracy. I am a professor at the University of Illinois Department of Linguistics. By now, there is a fifty-year-old academic literature on what we can expect from language immersion programs. And we can assess language acquisition in four domains: listening, speaking, reading, and writing. Two domains are oral, and two are textual. Two are receptive, listening and reading, and the other two, speaking and writing, are productive. The larger the class, the more the proficiency of students tends to be receptive-only, or students can understand but cannot produce. This is because productive skills like speaking and writing often require individual elicitation. When I did a study of the second-grade class at Yankee Ridge in 2023, which had nine students, students were practicing productive skills individually, and a literacy specialist was was working with students with special needs one-on-one. Today, with thrice the number of students, to do individual elicitation would be tedious, boring, and untenable. On the other hand, I would doubt that anyone would count receptive-only proficiency as being functionally proficient in a language. On another note, another way to assess language proficiency is what the scholar Jim Cummins called BICS versus CALP, Basic Interpersonal Communicative Skills and Cognitive Academic Language Proficiency. At Yankee Ridge, students are exposed to CALP in the sciences curriculum as early as second grade, such as plants, and animals, and their life cycles. Therefore, even at an elementary school level, they have CALP. However, to achieve CALP instruction in a foreign language requires more cycles of unpacking and repacking than in students' first language, and most Yankee Ridge students study French as an additional language. For example, when teaching a class of English speakers a scientific topic in English, you unpack scientific texts in everyday oral English and then repack in academic English. This is two cycles or two phases. When grappling with academic content in a foreign language, you first repack into everyday French, and then have students talk about it in Franck Lé, then repack into everyday French productively, and finally, repack into academic French, and then one additional phase of learning to write it down. This begs the question of whether all this repacking and unpacking can happen with twenty-six students in a class. Therefore, I strongly urge the program, if concerned with academic proficiency and productive skills, not only receptive skills, to consider reducing the class size back to what it was before. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Hannah Romanachuk. Romanachuk? Sorry if I'm pronouncing it wrong.
It's okay. I will be speaking on behalf of a parent who would like to remain anonymous. Hello. I would like to start with a quote of Darrett Bach. "If you think education is expensive, try ignorance." I would like to thank the USD one sixteen for all that they do for the education of our children. I would like to thank the teachers, administrators, and everyone who works tirelessly for the betterment of our children. I am an African-American woman who is privileged to have her child learn a second language at Yankee Ridge multilingual. I am grateful for this program because my child can speak, write, and read in a second language. She can communicate with communicate with her cousins and grandparents in a language that they understand. With that said, I do not want the program to die, and I want it to be there for my other children. My daughter is in fifth grade. Of her six years at Yankee Ridge in the French program, she has been in a split classroom for three consecutive years. While the teachers are experienced and well-organized, to teach two grades at once is almost impossible, and she is not being taught all the standards and things she needs to know before middle school. Thus, I am advocating for a lessening of the load of teachers by creating standalone classes or hiring specific content teachers like math or other subjects, so that all the material for each grade is covered, especially in math. My second daughter will start kindergarten in school next year. I really want her to go to Yankee Ridge, but I'm second-guessing because I do not want her to be in a split classroom, starting from second grade until fifth grade, as it is right now at Yankee Ridge, and I believe many parents will think like me. Please make my decision easier so that the program does not keep losing students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Aurora Moros.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for hearing us. Can you hear me? Yes. I am speaking in my capacity as a professor of French second-language acquisition teacher education at the University of Illinois, with twenty years of experience in language acquisition, specifically about French and teacher training. First of all, let me say that we are extremely lucky and grateful to have an exceptional dual-immersion program at Yankee Ridge in French. I'm sure you're aware of the fact that this is extremely rare in this country. And I'm sure that everybody here is convinced about why we're doing this. We're doing this because that's the right thing to do, right? We care about these children, their identity. We care about their feeling welcome. Obviously, we care about their academic standing, and we want them to achieve the sky, right? Absolutely. But there's more than just grades. There's also how they feel and their identity. If we've gone so far as to create such a wonderful program, let's make sure that we're keeping it quality program. This means a ratio of one teacher to ten, max fifteen students in the classroom. This is not me saying it. This is research. This is two decades of research on dual-immersion programs, okay? And this is not just about academic French development or ESL development, but also STEM, and also the way the teachers are able to make those students feel welcome. It's very important for what we call linguistic security, for the students to feel like they're not being rushed, but that they're being provided with exactly what we meant to do when this program was created. So I'm begging you to please reconsider the size of those classes for the well-being of the children. We need to expand on these programs. We don't need to start shortening the resources in any way, shape, or form. In fact, we need to expand to the middle school and to the high school. And please bear with me, because I'm here to bring you money even for this. I'm levying money from the French governments and from the Quebec government to be able to give more resources, including books. I just raised ten thousand dollars for French books that would go directly to the Champagne Public Library for all the kids to benefit from. So please help me, help them. I know we are all convinced about why we're doing this. Please get those kids to be max fifteen in one class. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Next up is Matthew Hans. Sorry, sorry. Can't quite read this. Is it Lotes or?
Lotz.
Lotz. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm a student of French at the University of Illinois, and I studied French in a split classroom in high school. And I just want to speak as a student in a situation like that, that it was it was very difficult to get the resources and attention needed from my teacher, who was she was the only teacher at my high school for for French, and she had to go across six different levels. This spread her very thin, and it made it very difficult to communicate with all the students and give them the attention that they deserved. This made, you know, acquiring material very difficult, and I can attest to that. It made it more difficult in my third and fourth years there when I was in a split classroom, as compared to my first and second, which were devoted to just those levels. So I implore you, please do not continue to expand the sizes.
Thank you. Next up is Allison Stodler.
Hi, thank you. I'm I am a parent of two kids in the French program at Yankee Ridge Multilingual School, and I'm here to express my deep concern regarding the continued use of combined classrooms. I recognize that this was a necessary short-term solution a few years ago, but it cannot be the long-term model. The challenges posed by multi-grade classrooms are significant, obviously, for teachers, but most importantly, for students. Multi-grade classrooms can be successful if they're strategically organized, not by simply combining every child into consecutive grades, regardless of their academic or social readiness, which has been the approach thus far. While there may be some social-emotional benefits to these combined classrooms, such as stronger peer relationships, these come at the cost of academic achievement. Teachers often are never trained for multi-grade classroom teaching, making it difficult to effectively modify the curricula to meet diverse student needs. This is especially an issue right now due to the math curriculum that is being used. My understanding is that the current math curriculum does not allow smaller-group learning, which means that teachers are essentially teaching to the entire group at the level of the lowest common denominator, and it's impossible for students in this situation to receive grade-level instruction required to meet the state's standards. Particularly alarming is the fact that some of these students have already spent three consecutive years in combined classes, and if this pattern continues, the current first-grade cohort will have endured four years in such an environment, and this is unacceptable. The lack of a clear plan to phase out the combined classrooms suggests a failure to prioritize student learning and academic success. The district must take a hard look at the funding allocations and ensure that the resources are directed first toward education of our kids and then for additional projects. We know that at least one teacher in the French program has not received a contract renewal for the next year, which strongly suggests that the district intends to continue with combined classrooms. However, the current enrollment numbers show that by 2027, the French program will be too large to sustain the four combined classes. Thus, another teacher will need to be hired one year after one was released. The whiplash from these staffing changes creates unnecessary disruption for the staff and fails to consider teacher satisfaction. One solution is to continue to work towards increasing incoming enrollment in the French program. This allows us to sustain our single-grade classrooms and maintain the current staffing levels. If the classes truly are too small to support a single-grade class, we need to provide additional staff for math intervention particularly, so that our kids can maintain the bare minimum state math standards. The French program within the multilingual school is a rare and valuable asset. We all know this. It makes the public or urban school system unique and attractive to families who might otherwise choose private education. However, the continued merging of classrooms only drives families away, and it sends the message that we do not truly support all multicultural learning opportunities. We owe our children a strong educational foundation, and I look forward to seeing meaningful changes to prioritize the success of our students.
Emma Ehrenhart.
I have a second grader in the French dual-language that for the second consecutive school year is in a split-level class. I'm here tonight to ask the superintendent and the board to can to reduce the number of split classrooms in French program, or at the very least, add an additional team member to teach some subjects such as math and French. While there can be advantages to split-level classes, the current system does not allow enough math or French instructional time. The current plan for next year has a split second, third-grade classroom, which will create a class size of twenty-six. This will make it the largest classroom at Yankee Ridge based off January enrollment data. I understand that this enrollment is technically within the allowable limit for a split enrollment per the teacher's contract, but this does not account for the additional burden of teaching in two languages. They have half the time to learn double the language and half the time to learn their grade-level math. This is causing our students to fall behind. Any Urbana student should have a limit of two of their six elementary years in a split classroom. Otherwise, we are setting them up for failure once they reach middle school. The twenty-six, twenty-seven academic year will contractually require a new French teacher because the enrollment for a split second, third grade will exceed the teacher's contract for maximum classroom size. We have an additional qualified French teacher now due to the temporary hire to fill another teacher's leave of absence. It would be wise to keep her employed, even with the other teachers return this fall, as French enrollment is growing and new teachers will be required in future years. We've been told our grade level and class enrollments are too low, but our second through fourth graders are at ten to twelve students per grade level. Thomas Payne has enrollment of eleven to thirteen students in the three kindergarten classrooms. Our current first graders, which are being proposed to combine next year, has fifteen students. Six other elementary classrooms in the district have fifteen or less students, excluding the special education program. So if it's a matter of fairness among teacher workload, what is the district doing to distribute those unfair workloads? The superintendent has referenced fairness among other teachers with respect to classroom size and difficulty recruiting qualified bilingual teachers to justify the split classrooms. It seems to me that's unfair for a teacher to have the largest classroom in the school and be expected to teach two different grade levels in the same amount of time, and we have the perfect opportunity to retain a qualified bilingual teacher next year. So please consider reducing the split classrooms or adding a team member to lessen the burden of the crowded split-level classes being created in French. Thank you.
Thank you. Molly Hedkey?
Hello, I'm Molly Hedkey. I've been a teacher in the district for twenty-two years. I have taught a lot of classes. I've taught some splits. I've taught small classes. I've taught large classes. So I'm here just to ask you all, have you been over to observe any of the classrooms? Have you seen the classrooms that have ten or ten to twenty kids versus the classes that have over twenty kids? Our kids are not getting easier. They are getting harder. And when you are you anybody good at juggling? Anybody? Can you do that, three things at once? Well, you know what? That's what you are asking us to do. And I can tell you that we have a lot of young teachers, and they have a lot of energy, but we need to think long-term, and so long-term is not shoving a lot of kids in class. And so I'm asking you, as a longtime teacher, to think carefully about what you're doing, and class size matters. I've been over the last five to ten years. I probably had twenty kids in my class. Yes, it is still hard. It's not as hard as when you have twenty-seven kids. That is a long line. There is a lot of kids. Some of those kids need me. I can't get to them. When there's a lot of kids in in class. And so the smaller the class, the better it is for our kids, and I think that's what we're all here for, whether it's French, Spanish, or English, but we have to do something different, because sometimes we keep doing the same thing, and we're getting the same results. So I'm asking you to think. Can you juggle? Have you observed a class of twenty-seven kids? Have you tried to teach two grades at the same time? You guys are asking us to do impossible things, and then you're saying, oh, guess what? Now do more. We can't do anymore. We're doing teachers. We are doing the best we can, but we need your help. And your help is to quit saying you can have more kids and you can do it. We can't. So we need your help. So please think about that. Would really appreciate it. My coworkers would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your exemplary services, District. Lacey Elliott.
Good evening. This is Hannah. She's gonna help me tonight. And so real quick before I start, well, I guess I already started. I just want to say there are other families in the French program who wanted to come tonight but are feeling uncomfortable being in public spaces and saying public things because of our current immigration stuff going on. So just know that as I talk tonight, no, it's my voice, but it's also other people in the program who didn't feel comfortable to come tonight. So. And I have two kids in French at Yankee Ridge in first and third grade, and Hannah will start in 2027. And I'm here tonight, the same reason other people are, to ask for you to implement a policy in Urbana that limits. That limits split classrooms for two years of our kids' careers. Others have mentioned our current second graders have been and will be in mixed-grade-level classes for their entire elementary school experience, besides kindergarten. Other teachers have two, sorry, our teachers have two curriculums that are scripted now, math and ELA, for a set amount of time each day, plus the French content to get to. And so there aren't just aren't enough actual hours in the day, and I think for one or two years, you know, that's sustainable for an entire elementary career. It's too much. It's not possible. I'm not against these curriculums. I think it's great that we have research-based curriculums, but I would like my kids to actually have the opportunity to finish the curriculums, and they just can't get to all of it. Looking at our current numbers at Yankee Ridge, I noticed that Papa John's class is larger than every other second or third-grade class by three to five students. And looking at the numbers for next year, the second and third-grade combined classes, the combined class will be twenty-six, which is six to eight more students than any of the other classes, and those classes are only trying to get through one grade-level worth of material. And I do get the need to be fiscally responsible, and having a third-grade class of eleven, it does sound small. It does. But right now, two of our third-grade classes are eighteen, so the difference between eleven and eighteen is seven kids. Next year, you know, to have twenty-six kids in that class, the difference is eight kids, right? So I just I don't get the logic of eleven being too small, but twenty-six not being too big, right? It's seven kids, eight kids, you know, it's the same pretty much. So, yeah, and and with the scripted curriculums, I just think it's too much to try to have two grade levels in a class of twenty-six, the largest class in the school. I just I don't think I think that's a recipe for failure. So I would love to see the district implement a policy that students can spend a maximum of two years in a split classroom starting next year. Thank you for considering.
Thank you. Janelle Elliott.
Hi, I have I'm Janelle. My daughter Macy graduated from Yankee Ridge as a French dual-language participant from K through five, and she learned so much. It was amazing. I am an evangelist for the French program at Yankee Ridge. We love the teachers dearly. She still is keeping up with her French. She plans to learn Spanish. I think it's just like opened her mind in ways that we could not have imagined when she asked us a kindergartner if she could go learn French. I now have another kindergartner girl, Jada, who just started this year, and I'm in that class just once a week and seeing how much they're learning. I'm a huge fan of the new curriculum. My daughter, my sixth-grade daughter, keeps remarking, oh, my gosh, she's learning so much. They're challenging her. She's coming home with homework, reading. Madame Quavey and Madame Romanchuk are amazing, the best team. And so just watching what she's learning, and I feel great about the amount all of her classes getting to learn. I cannot imagine having two grades, having to go through what is kind of an intense curriculum that we've adopted, given what we did last year. And so I just ask, can we feel good about, and are we actually allowed to set up a classroom, knowing that the kids in each grade won't actually get the opportunity to complete this curriculum, this research-based curriculum that we know is good for them? And we're combining them, knowing there's no way that a teacher can get through both of those sets for each grade and while they learn a language. Also, last year, I was at a French B-PAC meeting, and I was told by admin, and I don't know that this is a written rule, but I remember explicitly being told that in dual-language classes or classes that are predominantly, yeah, learning a second language, that they would, there's a cap, but it would be twenty percent less if a class is a dual-language class or a higher percentage of ESL students. And so we had talked about that, and if you go over a smaller cap, then you would get an aid, et cetera. And so I see the cap of twenty-nine, but from what I was told, I think about a year, year and a half ago, if it's twenty percent less, then I thought the cap would be twenty-three, and that's with it not being a split. So I'm not sure if that's no longer a rule or a recommendation, but I think it would make a lot of sense. And then lastly, I'm reminded of Wiley. I remember they had smaller class sizes, and they were seeing really good gains. And so I look at our French program, Spanish program, all the classes, really, and wonder if we're able to reduce class sizes and give the kids opportunity to get through this really good material. really good material, um, I think we'll reap great benefits. I think the kids will be learning, they'll catch up, and perhaps when we get onto other grades, um, yeah, they'll, they'll be able to handle what's in front of them and maybe less services needed. Um, and so, if we take that time now to help them get through the curriculum, I think it will be really great for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Last up is Florence Mathieu. If, um, anybody else wishes to make a statement before the board, you can still have time to fill it out on one of these sheets and hand it to Lori Johnson.
Dear Board members and superintendent, my name is Florence Mathieu. I teach first grade in a French DL program. Last year, I taught a first and second grade split class of twenty-four students plus one part-time student from the intensive instructional program. Last year, we had a first and second grade group together in my class, as well as third and fourth grade group together with another teacher. These students who were in fourth grade in a split class are now in another split class for fifth grade. This is their third consecutive year being in a split class, and the situation is taking a toll on their performance, especially in math. For evidence, six out of the seven fifth-grade French DL students who took the math map test in December scored a sixty percent or below on the test. That's six out of seven students. The fourth graders who took the math map test in December, who are in their second consecutive year of being in a split class, also scored low on their math map test in December. Eight out of ten fourth-grade DL students scored below sixty percent on the test. These numbers are very different from the numbers we typically encounter in our French DL classes. For example, in my class this year, only five out of fourteen students scored below sixty percent. With sixty minutes of class per day, that only gives thirty minutes of math for each grade for split classrooms. That model might be sustainable for one year, but not for two years, especially not for two consecutive years, and it's absolutely not sustainable for three years, especially not three consecutive years. No other students in the district are placed in split classrooms for more than one year, except the students in the intensive instruction programs, which have been a much lower ratio of students to staff. Being in a split classroom doesn't just affect our students' math performance. Their math learning time is reduced in half, but so is their English learning time, their French learning time, science, social studies, et cetera. We have received emails from the director of curriculum with ideas of adaptations for I Am Math and our new English curriculum CKLA. We have already made adaptations to our curriculum to cover parts of each grade standards. However, it is simply impossible to teach all of the lessons and all of the standards in the same amount of time for two grades. Our fifth-grade French DL, uh, students who are in split classroom for the third consecutive year this year have accumulated three years of delay in math, in English, in French, and everything else. How are they supposed to be well-prepared for sixth grade? How can you let this happen, especially in a time when there's so much talk about equity in the district? The situation is the opposite of equitable. The split classroom situation is also discouraging new parents moving to Urbana from enrolling their students in our French DL program, which will hurt our enrollment numbers in the future. As of right now, the plan is for my first-grade students to be in a split classroom next year when they will be in second grade. They would share one classroom with the third-grade students. There would be twenty-six of them in a second, third-grade class. I'm asking you to please reconsider this decision and allocate more resources to our program so that we could split these two classes. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, one last call. Does anybody else wish to speak before the board tonight? All right, uh, thank you. There is a call for an executive session after tonight's meeting for the purpose of litigation against the district. Um, there will be no action taken by the board after the executive session. Uh, is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any comments or discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Hickson?
Yes.
Why are we, for roll call? I don't, for, uh, for, uh...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm, I'm really exhausted. I skip ahead to the, to the action item. It's my fault. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? My, my apologies. Our first action item tonight is, uh, is an individual action item for administrative personnel items and...
Um, Mary Ann.
Okay, go ahead, Mary Ann.
Thank you. Bear with me. I know I'm not Angie, so I will try to do my best. Jeanette, if you can please come up to the podium. Tonight, we have Jeanette Delgado. She's a dedicated educator and teacher leader for the past twelve years here in Urbana. Jeanette has spent the last twelve years working with the dual-language program at Dr. Williams as a primary teacher and then moving to Lille as an instructional coach. She is currently the curriculum implementation teacher at Yankee Ridge Multilingual School. Beyond the school and district accomplishments, Jeanette has been a fellow and senior fellow with Teach Plus from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-three, where she's had the opportunity to publish research articles and present to stakeholders at various conferences. Currently, Jeanette is on the Educator Advisory Council for Advance Illinois. Jeanette holds a bilingual, bicultural, education and Spanish bachelor's degree from Western Illinois University and a master's of education and educational administration degree from University of Illinois-Champaign-Urbana. Jeanette is excited to continue working in Urbana as part of the sixth-grade center team and getting to help establish a strong foundation of education and success for students at the new building.
Thank you for providing the context for the motion. It's been, is there a motion? I'm sorry, I'm really out of it. Did we already move? Okay, is there a motion for the floor?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further comments or discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Hickson?
Yes.
Member Backsley?
Yes.
Member Langendorf, yes. Vice President Exon? President Palowski?
Yes.
Members, Member Stanton?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations.
Muchas gracias por estar, por esta oportunidad. Urbana ha sido mi hogar durante los últimos doce años, y estoy muy contenta de decir que Urbana sigue siendo mi hogar. He aprendido mucho y estoy muy agradable de haber tenido algunos de los mejores mentores aquí dentro del distrito. Me siento honnada de ser una de los primeros administradores del centro de sexto grado y ser parte de los doce por ciento de los latinos que son administradores de la escuela. Estoy encantada de continuar sirviendo a nuestra, a nuestros estudiantes y familias. I want to say thank you so much for this opportunity. Urbana has been my home for over twelv, for the, over the past twelve years, and I am overjoyed to say that Urbana is still my home. I have learned so much and have had some of the best mentors here within the district. I am honored to be one of the first administrators for the sixth-grade center and to be part of the twelve percent of Latinos who are administrators in schools across the United States. I am thrilled to continue to serve our students and families. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Congratulations. All right, uh, next up is our student ambassador report.
Okay, um, I'm gonna be covering four different topics today. And, um, like I did for last month, I'm gonna be doing just some brief history because, uh, yesterday was the last day of Women's History Month. Um, so, starting with Jeanette Rankin was the first female to hold, uh, federal office as a House of Representative, or in the House of Representatives. Um, and she was also the only one to veto against, uh, entering the war or declaring war against Japan. Um, next, we have Roberta Bobby Gibbs, who was the first female to complete the Boston Marathon, and she had to disguise herself as a male to actually be able to race. Um, and this broke a lot of barriers for women in athletic fields. Next slide, please. Madam CJ Walker was the first female, first self-made milli, uh, millionaire in U.S. selling hair care products for African-American women. Um, and was just a forefront leader as an entrepreneur. And Alice Paul was also a forefront leader as a women's activist, a women's rights activist, um, and was one of the forefront leaders campaigning for the Nineteenth Amendment, which gave women the right to vote. Um, so, we had the talent show this past Wednesday, and we had a lot of fun acts. Um, we had like rock bands, some singers, of course, um, the mariachi, floclorico, um, and solos, duets, all just kinds of things. And it was really nice to see the high school students showing off their different talents they had. Uh, next, we have UHS Baseball, which has a new coach this year, and they're doing really well. Um, they had a three-oh win start. That was like the first time they've ever gone three-oh, um, in the beginning of the season for a while, so they've been doing really well under new, uh, guidance. So, UHS Track, uh, just competed at Illinois Top Times. Uh, five athletes complete, competed, and three won medalists. Um, the one on the very left, Arlen Orr, uh, got second overall in the eight-hundred. Kaylee Bell in the middle got eighth overall in the sixty-meter. Um, and Jepen Judee also, uh, placed eighth in the eight-hundred, and they've all been breaking records during the indoor season, so can't wait to see what they do in the outdoor. And, oh, that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, now it's time for board reports. Does anybody wish to give a board report this evening? Go ahead, Sherri.
I had the opportunity, uh, yesterday to go to central office and help put together , um, packets or bags for incoming kindergarteners to help them, um, be prepared for their new school experience with materials, um, that will help them with pre-literacy and numeracy skills. And I, I understand that as students, uh, register for kindergarten, that they will receive a bag, um, which also includes a new book for children to have at home as well. And the books have materials in English, Spanish, and French. So, um, I'm glad that we were able to do that for the district. It was, uh, part of a group of Altrusans who also, uh, committed seven hundred and fifty dollars, I believe, to the project. I think that was the amount. Um, so, I was excited to see that and look forward to the families receiving them. The other hat I wear is with the pantry and I'm, um, this is a new experience this semester going into and being in the entire lunch, uh, um, periods for a sing, a single day or twice a month. And we've, I don't have the exact amount for this month, but through the semester, just being there two times a month, we have had over a hundred and forty kids come at least one time to get food, and I think that number's gonna be increasing. So, I'm, I'm glad that we have that opportunity to do that. So, that's it.
Thanks. Anyone else? Go ahead, Jennifer.
Good evening. I just wanted to say really quickly...
Sorry. Um, I wanted to say really quickly that, um, I, I don't know that we have had anybody apply yet to be on the board.
I'm gonna talk about that.
Oh, okay. Well, I was just going to say...
We have one application, but we still have one outstanding. So if you're gonna do an appeal, go for it.
Uh, okay, that's what I was gonna do.
Absolutely.
Um, I was just gonna say, I am the newest, yet oldest, person on the board. Um, and I would be very happy to meet with anybody who has an interest in being on the board. Where interest, it is, if you want to know about how much time it takes and, um, you know, what it's like, if you look on the board website, each of us has our own email address that goes to us, and you could email me, and I would be happy to arrange a time to talk with you. If you, and we do all sorts of interesting things and think about the people that were just speaking to us. They all made a really good case, and what we do is decide, oh, my gosh, that's a really good idea. Can we do this and this, or this, or this, or this, or that? And, um, your voice, other people's voices would be really welcomed. And so, if anybody has an interest, look me up on the board. I'm Jennifer Hickson, not Jennifer Ivorytato.
Yeah, so, uh, go ahead, Dr. Ivorytato.
Yeah, I was gonna bring this up, um, during the superintendent report, but since you made a great segue, I'm just gonna talk about it now, if that's okay with the board. We were gonna give you an update on how many applications we have. Um, so, we do have one applicant for, um, Sitlali's seat, but we did not receive any applicants and the, and our window closed yesterday for Tori's seat. So, um, I mentioned to Paul, this would be a good time, one, to figure out when we would like to interview the candidate. I mean, we only have one, so I don't know if we need to entertain an interview, or that's been our process in the past, or if we, um, so we can talk about that. And then, secondly, um, how would you like us, should we just go out and kind of re-advertise again and, um, do another appeal, um, to the public to really try to garner some interest in the, um, it's sub-district one?
Right, so, I mean, legally, we have, was it thirty or sixty days?
Uh, it's forty-five days.
Forty-five days. I split the difference. So, uh, once, once the election results are certified and the seat for sub-district one, um, is empty, we have forty-five days to fill a seat before the regional superintendent then would have the power just to appoint anybody they, they wished to that seat. Um, I would rather, I think, go through the process again and try to make another appeal personally, but I'd like to hear what the opinions of the other board members are on the matter.
Six, sorry.
Oh, six, I'm sorry. You're six.
Sitlali's one, you're six.
I got him, I got him backwards.
I did it too.
Um, anyway, uh, what, what, how do other board members feel? Should we, like reopen in front of the two weeks for just sub-district six?
Absolutely. I mean, I mean, we need to...
Could we, like, put, send flyers home at King?
Yeah, I was thinking about that. We could do a Sky Alert message. I think we did that at the beginning, but we can do it again, and maybe, we didn't do backpacks home, we did a Sky Alert, so we can do like a flyer that we send home in kids' backpacks. That's a great idea.
With, with a map on it, so people...
Okay, yep.
Is it just the King, or were there other schools?
No, it's not just King, but, but, King's a big part of it.
Yeah. That'd be, they're like a great audience to hit first.
There's some Lille too, yeah, a little bit. Right, and, and again, of course, there's probably kids at Yankee Ridge who attend to that, that sub-district too, or from that sub-district.
And we would just be opening it for the one sub-district.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, it wouldn't be fair to...
No, I agree. Oh, yeah, just for Tori's seat, yes. Okay, we could do that, and we can hit our social media again. Um, I don't know if there are any spaces that you can think of that we didn't advertise that maybe we could this time. We didn't do anything at any of the churches. Like, there are a few churches in that neighborhood. I just thought of that. That might be something we could send, like a flyer to those churches to post or something.
It was posted in the news gazette?
Um, we did not put it in the news gazette. The articles...
There was a, yeah, there's a story they interviewed. They interviewed, uh, Member Hickson for... But it can't, it can't hurt to reach out to Jeff.
And for viewers watching at home, uh, that's posted on the screen there momentarily.
The map. Thanks, John. Good idea.
And Tuesday...
The blue one is District Six. Blue teal, chartreuse.
I said Tuesday, I didn't mean that. Tomorrow is the conversation with the King.
Oh, tomorrow is, yes, is the listening session.
And I thought maybe if I went to that, I could make another appeal and see if...
Sure. I know they sent home a flyer today about tomorrow night. They put something in their class dojo today about it, so hopefully we have, the weather's not supposed to be great.
So what should we set the closing date for, uh, applications at? Is it two weeks, or... So, so, April fifteenth, then?
That's all good.
Speaking about April fifteenth...
Well, the Friday, what's, is Friday the...
Friday would be the, the eleventh.
Well, if we did...
The nineteenth, or...
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
Friday is good, if we did like maybe April eighteenth.
Sure, I'm, I'm okay with the eighteen.
Okay.
I'm not sure about people's availability, but to interview the, the candidate, um, is it possible to do it before a meeting on the fifteenth? Because we'll, hopefully, all be here. I don't know what time people can get here before the meeting.
When, when there was only me, um, as a candidate, you didn't interview.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I don't think we need to interview. All we, all we really need to do legally is like make sure they live in the, in the sub-district.
And we can still share the application, the resume, just so you can, you know, you'll learn a little bit more about her if you, we can do that for sure. But, yes, you're right, we did not do interviews when we just had one person.
Right, um.
And she's a current parent at Thomas Payne, so, and UMS. She's a student at UMS and at Thomas Payne.
Excellent.
Okay, so, um, the other thing that I wanted to ask is, uh, we have until May twelfth, I believe, to seat the new members. And so I was anticipating, at least for this person, we would do that for our first meeting in May. That has been our standard, what we've been doing, so is that still?
Yeah, I mean, uh, how we've done it in the past is, it's usually the meeting after we get the election results from the county clerk. So sometimes that's been, like, the, the first meeting in May, there's been, like, once or twice, it slipped into the second meeting in May based on, you know, what's happening in the county clerk's office.
But this, in this case, Jennifer's unopposed. Well, yes.
Well, I would, no, we know what the results are, but they still need to be certified.
Yes, yes.
Right. So, um, I'm anticipating the first meeting in May, but-
Okay, so that would be May sixth.
But, you know, that, it, it might slip, but I'm, I'm guessing it won't, it won't. You wouldn't have to be here, but it's kind of tr- it's kind of like tradition for the outgoing member to be honored on their way out.
Yeah, we usually will, will honor you and thank you for your service. And, and so after, after that, you're welcome to go.
Yeah.
You don't have to go sit in the audience, you can go.
I mean, normally, yeah, normally they, they show up for roll call, we say, we give this, we say thank you, and then we square in the new members, and then-
Take your picture and-
And then that's it.
Yep.
I know the agenda you, on that evening is usually pretty light, too. Usually, not always.
Well, May is pretty busy, but yes. All right, thank you, that is what I needed. So, thank you for that, we don't have to do it later.
All right, any other board reports over here? Okay, uh, we do have, uh, three administrative reports tonight. The first up is our SRO program review.
Okay, so I am going to invite the rest of our focus, except, with the exception of the, um, district calendar discussion, which is part two of that, is on crisis and safety. So, um, in the audience, we have our school resource officers who, who I'll invite up. Lori or John, do you wanna put an extra mic up there, maybe? But, um, I'll kinda go through our, uh, introductory slides. We're gonna talk about the agreement. Um, and then we have a, a new topic in the study topics, uh, related to, um, safety for our students. And then John is gonna talk about, um, security, crisis. So tonight is crisis and safety night. So, um, we're gonna start with talking about our wonderful SROs. Um, we have, uh, Chad Burnett here from Urbana High School and, um, Michelle Robinson from, uh, Urbana Middle School. And currently, next year, she will serve both buildings, um, as the school resource, resource officer for sixth grade center and for UMS. So I'm gonna kinda just go through these initial slides. This is just our, um, introduction for anyone not familiar with the SRO program. I know we are, um, we've, we're in year five and, um, we'll talk about the agreement next. But a lot of this is repeat for board members who have been on the board for several years. Uh, but I know we always have someone new out there who maybe doesn't know the background and the, kind of, our philosophy of how we run our SRO program. We also have a couple of Urbana police officers who work really closely with the district, um, either through crisis team, our crisis committee, or our, kinda, our liaisons for other things. So they are in the audience with Mr. Guzman, principal from Urbana High School, and Mr. Cooper, principal, principal from Urbana Middle School. So, um, if the board members have specific questions when we get to the end, we, we're ha- the principals are here and they can jump up and kinda answer specific things if you have specific questions. But otherwise, um, Officer Burnett and Officer Robinson will share at the end of this. So, okay, what is a school resource officer? Um, so by federal definition, um, of our school resource officers, and of course, the definition is they are career law enforcement officers sworn, um, authority, uh, to, and who is deployed by an employing police department or agency in a community-oriented policing assignment to work in collaborations with schools. I should just read it instead of trying to paraphrase. Um, our, uh, school resource officers, as you know, are actually employees of Urbana Police Department, um, but they are also, uh, we consider them ours as well. Um, but they technically are employed by Urbana Police. And they serve in the, um, they serve in the role of a career law enforcement officer in our schools. Um, the primary goal of the SRO program is to maintain a safe learning environment and build positive relationships with our school communities. Okay, why does Urbana have an SRO? So our SROs, um, foster positive relationships between our young people, um, and the police. They strengthen police-community connections and support safe learning environments by protecting our students and staff from high-threat situations that either start inside the school or that have the potential to come into our schools from the outside in the community. So, um, that is the overall general purpose and the, um, one of the reasons why. However, um, we, uh, as a district also, um, believe that our SROs also, um, they are that front line of communication for us. I think we all feel safer knowing that they are in our schools, um, and that they're dealing with really high-need, um, situations. They are also the liaison for the, uh, police department and the school district. So when there are things that we need to know about, um, in a timely, um, just right-away crisis moment, um, they are those people who are also serving in that role for us as well. Our, our SROs are trained specifically to work with students and intervene only in specific high-threat situations. So on the next slide, we talk about the fact that, um, they are not there to serve as deans or break up fights and, um, deal with some of those high, um, kind of, day-to-day behavioral issues. Um, our SO, our SROs do not engage in behavior matters with students. Now, they do have to intervene sometimes if it, uh, may be a high-threat situation that their presence can help diffuse, or, um, if they intervene, that, that is possible. But they are not there for behavior management purposes to deal with just everyday student behavior. Um, our administrators and staff, um, who are trained, our deans, um, manage those, um, situations. They're responsible for student discipline issues. But of course, um, Officer Burnett and Officer Robinson are go-tos, they're in the building, so they definitely are sounding boards for administrators when they, um, need to talk through something that they're concerned about, um, just having them there is, um, helpful as well. The SROs collaborate with administration on arrest decisions and divert youth from the criminal justice system whenever possible and appropriate. I know when we initially, um, started the SRO program several years ago, this was a, um, a, a primary concern from, um, members of the community who came and spoke. Um, I know I went to several, uh, city council meetings, um, years ago where a number of people came out from the community concerned about, um, the prison pipeline and that having SROs in our building, um, was, um, kind of feeding the prison pipeline. Well, that is the opposite, I feel, of what, how we manage our SRO program. I can't speak to what other districts or what other schools do. Um, but in our program, um, our last resort in any situation is an arrest. Um, we want to do whatever we can to, um, get our students' support, to get them services. Um, if that is connecting them, you'll see when they do their reports, um, connecting them with Youth, Youth Assessment Center or any other social agencies who might be able to work with the family or work with the student. Um, we do have to arrest, uh, students sometimes and it's the nature of being twenty-twenty-five and things happen that did not used to happen in high schools that now we do have to address. And sometimes there, our students, um, are involved in criminal activity in the community and we have to address that, um, especially if that criminal community has the potential to seep into the building. So, um, but those decisions are never made in isolation. Our SROs are always collaborating with administrators. They are really good about, um, making sure that they reach out to me, so I'm not surprised. Or, um, if there are things that they're concerned about and they wanna talk it through and say, you know, um, we found out from the police department that there is, one of our students participated in a criminal activity and, um, they're going to be arrested. So our SRO might then intervene and say, hey, I have a relationship with that student, so I'm gonna be the one to go and do that instead of having someone from patrol do it. Because, um, we want them to be that person that our students see and trust, um, instead of a stranger who they don't know and don't have a relationship with, um, being that person who, um, has to intervene and make that arrest. That doesn't happen very often, you'll again see that in the data that they shared today. But there are times when it has to happen. Um, but to, um, say that we were defer, uh, diverting our youth from the criminal justice system, I think is a really appropriate comment because we do that as much as we can. And then what are some of the ongoing duties? So, um, I haven't updated this slide very much because this is still what they're doing. So, um, as I mentioned earlier, they definitely liaison between the police department and our schools. Um, and that is not just from eight to three fifteen at the high school, eight thirty to three thirty at the middle school. That is after school and on weekends. I mean, so they're, um, staying up to breast on things that are happening. They let us know first thing Monday morning, hey, here's all the things that happened over the weekend that you need to know about. Um, so they are that liaison, just, um, pretty much all the time they need to be. So they are, that is kinda part of their role to make sure that we are not surprised and have things that we don't know about that we need to know about. Um, they also are the liaison between our schools and the juvenile detention center. I just realized that says JDC, but that's what JDC stands for. So, again, as I mentioned, um, we do sometimes have our students who, they don't make good choices and, um, when you don't make good choices and you can commit crimes, there's, there are things that happen, right? And sometimes our students end up, um, here in town at the juvenile detention center. So they work as a liaison, um, between the, the JDC, with the parole folks. Um, and they're also, um, keeping us abreast of things that are happening through that justice lens, so then we can make connections with our students and their families to make sure that we're keeping them connected however we can. Um, they're a member of the school threat assessment teams. Um, I think Michelle is a member of the district threat assessment team. Um, they both participate in the district crisis committee and on their school crisis teams. Um, they definitely are resources for students navigating the court system and legal questions. So, not as much at the middle school, but I know Chad has shared examples of students coming to him and saying, what happens if this happened? Or, um, they may have a court date, or, um, we have students, or maybe their family members who go to court and they aren't quite sure about the process and they may come and say, hey, what does this mean? Um, what is, or what's going to happen when I go to court? Um, at the high school, of course, we have driver's ed classes. And so, um, one of the, uh, one of our roles is we want to get our SROs into classroom spaces whenever we can. So driver's ed is one of those very natural spaces where, um, it makes sense to have a police officer to go and say, hey, um, you know, you should not be texting and driving and here's some of the things that can happen if that, um, happens. And I think Chad is also still continuing to go to the business law class, um, when invited. Um, they provide countless rides to students, um, needing additional safety measures. Or, um, sometimes we just have students that might be afraid, um, who, they've been involved in something in the community and, um, they don't feel comfortable walking home or, um, you know, going home on MTD. And so they might approach one of our officers and say, hey, can you give me a ride? I need a ride home and I don't feel safe to do that. Um, and the fact that we have young people who do that speaks a lot to their relationships with these students, that they would come and say, you know, I don't feel safe going home, can you take me? Um, attending meetings, they are, they are, um, available to attend meetings when there are possible threats or safety concerns are made, um, as well as those threat assessment, um, situations where we have a student that we're concerned about and we might involve them in that conversation. Of course, um, one of their roles unfortunately is, uh, confiscating items that don't belong at school, like, uh, drug paraphernalia or, uh, vaping devices. Um, and also, we have had accidents on site. And, and so, uh, I know that happens when you have young drivers at a parking lot, right? Um, so assisting students and staff when there have been accidents on school property. And so they have kinda had to intervene when that has happened as well. And you guys can stop me if there are questions as I go along. So that was my portion of kinda just the review of our program. Um, any questions before Michelle and Chad jump in? Okay, um, oh, go ahead, Sid Lally. Yeah.
How the students approach them when they need a ride?
Oh, yeah, you wanna, you wanna share?
Yeah, students will either approach me personally, or they will approach their dean and ask if they can contact me and see if we can make arrangements. Typically, my policy with deans, and they understand this, is I have to have the permission from a parent to take them home. So we make a call home and say, is it's okay if your son or daughter is transported home by, uh, Officer Burnett? And generally, they've never said no. So, that's, that's my policy. I won't transport a student home without a permission of a parent or guardian.
And the transportation is a police car?
It's the squad car, the SRO squad car, yes.
And this is, uh, until the student feels safe, or it has like a limited time?
Say that again?
It has a limited time, or is it until the student decides that it's okay to go back home by himself?
Uh, it's, it's only when a student asks for the ride. I mean, if, if, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, it, um, some students may say, I need a ride all week and we can make those arrangements. You know, I've had to take students in, not this year, but in past years, I had to take one particular student home almost daily. Um, and that was just the arrangement that we had. Uh, we wanted to make sure that he kept himself where he needed to go and got there safely. So, it, it just depends on the situation.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay.
I have a question, I'm sorry. Um, I guess it could be for either one of you, but I know we talked about this last year also, about the, um, the vape stores and, you know, uh, uh, has that gotten any better? Cause I know it's still showing up at the schools and I'm just wondering if there's anything you all could suggest that, what can we do about that? Because I know that that's causing a lot of problems in the schools.
So one of the goals that I have that I've been working with, I know my admin team, is we are trying to bring in a new alternative for students that vape. Cause unfortunately, right now, um, it's in-school suspension or out-of-school suspension when they are caught with the device, which we are starting to prove with statistics and a lot of training that I've been through this year, that if a student is vaping in school, we already have an addiction. So the reason why, it's an, to me, it's a big, like, it's bad. I mean, my, I have sixth graders that were, it's, it's getting bad. But that being said, we're going to try to go with a, almost like a drug and alcohol counseling, um, for next year. We're looking into, if they're in school suspension, so one of the reflections would be kind of like, like, the training that we sometimes have where you watch the video and then you've gotta answer questions and it kinda gives, like, the, what it can do with the mental health, those kinds of things. And it's something that they would have to complete as part of, you know, the, the in-school suspension, um, rather than being out of school. And so we're hoping that those things, um, will correct it and change it. If it doesn't, then we are trying, working with the mental health department at the school, I'm trying to bring in, like, legit drug and alcohol counseling. It's just a matter of trying to find the right mental health, cause you need a specific degree to do that. And so it would be kind of part of one of our, like, the stage groups that we're trying to get really implemented in the school. So hopefully, next year, kinda things are changing, we're trying to bring these new things to try to back off of it. I can say my numbers have gone down from last year. So it is kind of getting better, but we're getting younger, so.
Well, that, that's really great. I mean, that's inspiring just to hear that something is, you know, in the works for that. Cause I mean, just hearing about sixth graders getting a hold of stuff like that is, that just blew me away. I mean, for real. But, um, I also really appreciate, you know, you growing that extra mouth and doing that. That, that makes a really big, I mean, it'll make everybody's life a whole lot easier and it'll save some kids.
Right.
So, thank you.
Both schools are also implementing vape sensors in bathrooms, trying to, just another level of prevention, just to, you know, so that we can get on top of it faster. Um, how they're- How they're getting them and how they get, gain access to it? I know that was your question. They, it's outs- outside of the schools. I mean, they're not getting them in the schools. It's outside of schools. Whether they get an older brother or sibling or someone to go buy one and then they either steal it from them or take it from them. Or they're, they're getting access to them. And it's unfortunate because I think it's get, like Michelle said, the age that these kids are getting them is a lot younger than it used to be.
And my younger kids are just picking them up off the streets. So they, they're walking around, finding them on the ground at the bus stops. They're just picking them up and next thing you know, they've got one and they're using it, so.
I remember, you know, just what, what it used to be over here. Just like Tiger Academy used to be a candy store. And that's the most of the thing that we were worried about getting caught with. So it's just blows my mind, but thank you both, appreciate it.
So, oh, go ahead, John.
Last, last spring, I think it was when we had our report from the SROs. It was recommended that we have an SRO at the sixth grade center. And we're not recommending that now. I'd like to know what changed. And then will one or both of the SROs that we hire for UMS and UHS, share some responsibilities for the sixth grade center? And if so, will there be some dedicated space for SRO work time at the sixth grade center? That's required by the contract. And then do we have data to tell us the numbers about how many incidents there were this year and last year? For the different grade levels? So in other words, when I looked at the data that you sent us, there were lots more fights and just as many weapons at UMS as at UHS. Even though it's three grade levels instead of four. What we don't know is if these incidents were mainly involving the seventh and eighth graders? Or were there a significant number of incidents involving sixth graders? Obviously, you said the vaping was sixth graders. So I was just wondering, you know, how important is it that the SRO be there full time? Have a full time presence at each school? And therefore, as they're taken away for some specific times at the sixth grade center? Or I was just wondering how you were thinking that would work?
So I'll speak to the third SRO part first. And Michelle, you can talk about the seventh and eighth graders. So I think when we talked about the SRO, we said that that would be, we didn't guarantee that we would have one at sixth grade. We said it would be something that we would talk to Urbana Police about. And of course, any third officer that we have, we have to pay our portion of that person's time. Which is a significant budget increase. But again, I think at that time, when Officer Bain and I had talked about it, there were staffing issues within the department. We had people on leave, people injured, not we, they. People on leave or injured and at that point, they weren't even sure if they would have an available officer to give us for the sixth grade center. And so when I met with them, that is still the case, I think, right now. Before they give us the third person out of their rotation. Because if we, if we take an officer, that's taking somebody from patrol or taking somebody that they desperately need right now to cover their own staffing needs. So what we agreed to do for this year was to, since it is the first year, is to see, and Michelle can talk about, most of our incidents are with seventh and eighth graders. But what we decided because of that, because most of the incidents are seventh and eighth grade related, that we would just kind of use this year as kind of our temperature check to see how often she might be needed down at sixth grade. What, you know, what incidents or what are the real issues that would call her down to the sixth grade center? And just kind of see how that goes. One, then that is a kind of a good data collecting year for us. And two, it gives the police department the possibility to, you know, see if they're even going to be able to spare a person. I know just from me following the conversations that happened at council. I know Chief Boone has asked for additional officers. And I don't believe that those have all been funded and approved through the council yet. So I think until the council approves additional officers for their department, I don't know that they have a third officer that they could provide to us for this, next year. Now, if we see a huge need and we see that they're, which I don't anticipate. But if, if for whatever reason, we have lots of new kids move in or something changed from fifth grade to sixth grade. And we really went to the police and said, hey, we really need that third person. If the board was willing to pay the additional money, then that would be something I could go back to the chief and deputy chief and talk about. But I think this year, we decided we want to kind of do a wait and see, collect data. And Michelle, when it, I don't know if we want to jump, we can just go to the middle school slide if we want. Have, you care, Chad, if Michelle presents first? And Michelle can kind of talk about the incidents that she's got listed here. I know we didn't, we don't usually parcel them out by six, seventh or eighth because most of them are seventh and eighth graders. But Michelle can talk about that when she kind of goes through her data.
So I'll start with sixth grade for me is more of relationship building. It's more of counseling, it's more of mentoring, getting to know the kids. One of the things that I do this year is spend a lot of time, I'm meet and greet. So I work at their door. So it's just coming in and you know, good morning, smiles. I don't spend a lot of time in the sixth grade wing. I'm, it's one of those things where I'm called to address something. A lot of my stuff on that side, really this year, has been more threat assessment based than it has anything else. A few vapes, but that's like, we're going to say it, sixth graders do great the first semester. Second semester starts coming around and we're getting comfortable and things change. So that's one of the reasons why we want the sixth grade centers. We're hoping that we can have, you know, a uniform year with them, that we don't lose them that second semester. But mainly, that's what it is with sixth grade. It's just building those relationships, getting them to know me at a friendly level. I spend more time between seventh and eighth grade, a lot of time in eighth grade. So by the time your eighth grade students, they are unfortunately doing things that are more adult-like, that more of your high schoolers are doing. So I spend a lot of time in, with my eighth graders. Seventh grade is just that transition year. Yeah, that's all I can say about my seventh graders, but that's where it's at. So I think the goal, we have not figured it out yet. Ms. Carr and I are going, like, that's the goal this summer is to kind of sit down and work on that and kind of figure out how we are going to split that time. I know that it's been mentioned that most of my time will be spent at the seventh, eighth grade building on call for the sixth grade building. I would like to spend time in the sixth grade building because I won't have that morning arrival time that I have with them now or lunch with them. So hopefully, things get better to where I don't have to be at the seventh, eighth grade building all the time. Cause I always make the comment, if the cat's away, the mice will play. That's what we're trying to, you know, reconfigure so that I can spend more time at the sixth grade building and kind of go back and forth between the two is the plan. So just to get into my numbers for this year. We've had nine police reports this year and our police reports were due to the seriousness of incidences. All of these reports were some pretty serious situations that needed to be documented. And they were, at this point, I think, well, two of them were threats against, which is one of the last at the bottom. Two of them were threats against school staff or students. So those were either verbal threats to cause great bodily harm inside the school. Or they were social media threats to cause harm to the school or students within the school. And then the others were mainly fights that ended up with injury. I had four youth assessment referrals and those were due to seriousness of victim injury. So all four of those, we had some pretty serious injuries in those incidences. Three of those Yak referrals were from one incident. Most of our serious incidences are happening on the MTD buses on the way home. A lot of that has to do with the fact that we have yonder pouches now and no cell phones. So we don't, we can't videotape those confrontations inside the school. So they're doing it on the MTD buses so they can. Vandalism is at nineteen. And we kind of went through these because vandalism, like all of these categories are general. So we looked at some little things. So like vandalism can be, we just write on the desk. These reports are serious vandalism. So damage to something or permanent damage or time where our custodians have to go and repaint or clean things. We had seven thefts this year, which is a big drop from last year. Out of those seven thefts, four of the items were recovered within the school day or within a couple of days of the school day. And then three of the items were not recovered. We had a drop from last year with vape devices. We ended up only confiscating nine. I was very shocked when I looked at those numbers and thought, no, I'm pretty sure more. Well, I, I keep them. So I have, I have originally, eventually used for wristwatch. Counted them, we've, we've got nine vapes, so that's a, that's a big difference. We have five under the influence or possession of controlled substance. So our under the influence is going to be cannabis use. So we only have five, which is a drop from last year as well. I know last year I reported at the end of the year and was really upset to give us our fights. But we are down a hundred fights from last year, which that's a big drop. But a hundred and eighty-seven fights without injury. We had eighteen fights with injury. And then we had six assault and battery with injury. What we document assault and battery in, within the school system is a single person. So meaning that a student comes up, hits another person, that other student does not defend themselves or fight back. So it's just one, like one person, injuries have happened with that. And then, like I said, the two threats against the school on social media or verbal. And then we went down in weapons as well. So metal detectors are helping. We had four confiscated weapons. So one Orby's gun, one knife that actually came in second semester. So we made it all the way to second semester. We did have a student bring a pair of brass knuckles and then one razor blade. None, the way that our metal detectors are, and I just want to put this out there. The way that our metal detectors run is that I can say this much, none of these came through the metal detectors. So we only have metal detectors at one door. And then we have a, two separate entrances that kit students can come through. So either they came in after a certain time period. We don't have enough staff to staff the metal detectors all day. So they don't go through the metal detectors after a certain time of arrival. All of these did not come through the metal detector on the days that they were found. They came from word of mouth of other students reporting to teachers or deans that so and so had this. So that's how, and then there were no threats attached to any of those. I've done multiple transports, rides home. Lot of kids, I missed the bus, can you just give me a ride home type thing? Those are kids that I'm, I know families and I'm exactly like Chad in that have to have permission from a parent to do so. But a lot of my after school transports are kids that I, I know the parents and they would rather me just take them home than them walk home. And then I've done several home visits. We are working, I'm working closely with doing a lot of truancy visits these days. Trying to get attendance back up and running for our middle schoolers because we've got a lot of ones that are out. And then working with SAS and DCFS. So good news to report that the Youth Assessment Center has upped their staff. And so they are going to start coming into the school. So I've had the opportunities to meet with them. So they are going to be able to start doing a lot of their visits at the school. So that's one of the things that Chad and I will get to do to bring them in. And are, not all referrals to Youth Assessment Center are through the police department. School districts can also refer their students for additional help and resources that we don't have within the district. So those are my numbers for the year.
Questions for Michelle before we?
I had a question. With the vape device confiscation, is this something that's like, students are actually using less? Or is it a thing where it's like, they've just learned how to hide it better? Where it's like, oh, strict parents like raise sneaky children kind of situation?
So one, yeah, one of the things I can say is tobacco use is used as a form of self-medication to relieve anxiety. So a lot of students that you, my vapes are all tobacco. So none of the vapes have been anything other than tobacco vapes. So a lot of them are hiding them, our metal detectors do not catch vapes. Just like you can take them on an airplane because you can go through the metal detectors at the airport and they don't go off. They are getting very sneaky at where they hide them because it's in places that we are not allowed to go find them. So for us, it's, we may get an alert and it goes off, we pull kids out. But district policy is if we can't find it on them, then there's no way to prove. So we have a lot of passing off back and forth. They're hiding them in the bathrooms. So there's some, like I said, there's some things that we're implementing for next year to kind of change that and go from there. But yes, it is, they are getting very sneaky. And then parents don't understand where they're getting it from. Because it's not something that's condoned in the home, it's just happening outside of the home or in school.
Is the plan for Yak to come in, will, will they have a, like a targeted group of peop- of kids that are maybe considered more at risk or have had some of the issues that are mentioned here? Or is the plan to try to go in and reach all kids in some sort of?
So as of right now, the goal is, so back when I was in the school, started in twenty nineteen, we had a specific caseworker that worked with Urbana. And so it's, it's hard for especially younger students to get across town to where Yak is. And so what they were realizing that when you come into the school and do their check-ins at the school, they're more successful with the program. And so they, like everybody else, had staffing issues and were really low. So the goal is to, there will be ones that have been referred by either patrol or chatter eye inside the school. But then if it's a, if it's a school youth assessment referral, that they need like any kids that are slipping, that we kind of see them going down that wrong path. We can get, we can put them, refer them to the program and kind of get them reset. So they will have their own caseload. Now, I do know that Stuart Williams, he mentioned that that is one of the things he would like to start doing. Is kind of come in and, which of course, all this will be next year, come in and kind of do more of an overall with students. And be able to answer questions and address what the, what the Youth Assessment Center is and what it can actually help with. Because it's not just to prevent kids from being in the criminal system. It can also help families with resources that they may not be able to find or provide for themselves.
I just wondered if it were more referral based just for the kids that have been referred? Or if there is some of those conversations about prevention and services that'll, you know, happen at a bigger level or not?
That's a goal, we got big things for next year.
Yeah, I was going to ask that question too because I had not heard that yet. So thanks, Michelle, for sharing that.
You said that you spend a lot of time developing or trying to develop relationships between yourself and students. And I was wondering if you could convey some positive changes that you've seen in, in kids because of your relationships with them?
So it comes down to, when you have a good relationship with a student, you can kind of get them to do what they need to do. And there are students that will not respond to general staff in the building. And then I get a call over the radio, hey, can you come help? And so even though we don't dress behavior, if you're a mentor and you have that relationship, I can talk a kid back into class. I can talk a kid down if they're in a heightened state. If you have those relationships, you're talking them down. So they may be cussing out a staff member, cussing out a dean on the ver- like, things that we learn as officers. They're, they're clenching their fists, they're on that verge of leave me alone or I'm going to cross the line. I can come in and bring them down and they'll go with me. And we can go, we can talk, we can get things calmed down. And so we're, we're avoiding situations, which a lot of times with the kids that, that I have, like my group is what I call my kids. My, my group of kids is that we're talking them down enough that it doesn't lead to them getting in trouble in the school. So when they get to that heightened state, then of course, they do something. So now they have to be disciplined. If we can keep them under that state, then we're avoiding the in-school suspension, the out-of-school suspension and that type of discipline that they're getting.
Chad?
Okay, so my numbers are all fine, a little bit lower than they have been in the past. But we had six police reports, one Youth Assessment Center referral. but we had six police reports, one Youth Assessment Center referral, um, one arrest, I can explain that later. It was, it's titled an arrest because handcuffs were placed on a student, although the student was then released to a parent. We have to title it as an arrest, and I have to write a report on that, because we placed him in handcuffs, but he was so out of control, not compliant with anyone. He wouldn't leave the building until patrol and myself placed him in handcuffs. And his mom showed up, and then he eventually went. And it took his mom, myself, and patrol to, to get him out of the building. It was just an unfortunate situation, but we did release him to his mom, and you know, he's, he's still not with us unfortunately, but he's got other services right now that's available to him. I assist with EMS when they respond. We had six cases where emergency medical responses required ambulances, seizure, PE, injuries, just sickness, uh, things like that, nothing related to any fights or anything like that. We had twenty-seven incidences of drugs, drug paraphernalia, vaping, kids being under the influence of drug or alcohol. We did have some alcohol incidents this year, we had marijuana incidents. We do have vaping with both tobacco and THC within the building at times. It's not just all nicotine. The number's probably a lot lower than what goes on in the building. I'm gonna be honest, we have sensors that go off, sometimes we don't get to the sensors before the student or the person has left the restroom. And as Michelle said, some of these students are being searched by a dean, and they're putting these things in places that the dean is not gonna, they're not gonna look for it. So there, that's probably a little bit low, and could be doubled probably, if not more. But it is lower than, and there's been less, I think there's been less THC marijuana in the building than in previous years. That would be my personal opinion. Fighting has gone down, we had twenty-four fighting incidents involved with and without injuries that involved fifty-four students roughly, which means, you know, there weren't all one-on-one fights. We did have a couple of fights that involved more than two people. Forty incidents of gross misconduct, which that can be, also can be a fight. It just could be a, a fight, including after the fight, then they're cussing out a teacher, and then they just titled the consequence gross misconduct. There's, were forty of those this year, there were a lot more of those type of incidents last year. We did have five weapons confiscated, two of them being Orby guns. We had a little party in the parking lot with Orby guns where students decided they were gonna play with them. Like, an Orby gun is basically a plastic, like, shoots a water pellet, basically. It's a, like a, a round bubble that's filled with water. It's what an Orby gun is, they're not supposed to be on the property. Our high schoolers tend to do it at ends, at the end of the school year, at certain homecomings, different things. We, we find them every once in a while, um, and we just confiscate them. We had one knife, we had two mace, um, canisters that were recovered. Again, th- those weren't used in threatening manners, but some of our students carry ma- some of our, I would say our older female students more so, carry mace on their keychain and forget to have it, and they know, then someone sees it, alerts somebody about it, and then we have to remove it from them. That's generally what, what that is. It's pepper spray, uh, pepper spray or ma- yeah, I mean, it's another term for it. It's just a small canister that, you know, self-defense type thing. Uh, I, I dealt with eight parking lot cra- traffic crash incidents this year, where someone backed into another student, or a student backed into a teacher's car, or there was a minor collision on the property. Those happen, those are things that I take advantage of that time to talk to both parties, both families, and try to educate the students what they need to do when those things happen. I just use it as an educational moment, 'cause we're not gonna write citations and do things like that at that time. So we have to make sure that the information's exchanged, um, they have the right information on their, on the person or in the car. Just explain the whole process that they would have to go through if they, if it happened to them on the street. Um, just explain the differences. We have multiple transports home. I get asked by deans to take students home, whether it's a disciplinary issue, if they don't have a ride, they, they can't get away from the building, or they just need to leave the building for the day for some o- other reason. The nurse, our school nurse calls me at times because a, a student is ill and cannot, parent can't come get them, so I make sure they get home and get to where they need to be safely. And then just students will come and request at times, they miss the bus, then they're panicked and, you know, we end up taking them home. So, just for various reasons. And again, I get calls from our social work office, they have questions, you know, this student came, reported this, are we on the right path, and what services would you recommend? They typically have all the right answers, but we collaborate together and make sure that, whether it's a student that lives uh, in Urbana's jurisdiction or the Champaign Ca- County Sheriff's jurisdiction, you know, we get the right people to them to help them get service the way they need. We involve SAS, DCFS, we talk about Youth and, Youth and Center for Family Solutions to help coordinate some, you know, some families maybe struggling. We set, we've set them up, certain families up with them, uh, just to try to, to bridge some gaps there. We do that, so I would say overall our numbers are down. I think there's several reasons that, um, that go play a factor in that. One is the overall maturity of students in high school is a little different than in the middle school level. You asked specifically if we had it broken down by grade level. I don't have it broken down by grade level, but a larger number of our fights are with our freshman students that are just coming in and learning the processes that we have in the high school. And the numbers have consistently gone down each year. I think uh, this administration now has, has laid the groundwork in, in our building that we, we don't like to have the fights, we try to get them stopped before they start. They're very proactive and, and they've built enough trust with their students. And students will come to me if they have a problem, I can work with the administration or a dean, go directly to them, and we can get ahead of it prior to it developing into a major, you know, distraction in the building. And we, we respond very quickly to a fight taking place, to try to limit the distractions. So if you can eliminate the show from, from prolonging, then it, it definitely helps the situation. You don't have to have the hallways closed off for a long time, you don't have to distract other students from their learning environment. We just try to keep people moving and get the problem to an office. And if we can't do that, then we make the, or I make the decision, I'll tell, talk with Principal Guzman, I'll say, hey, we need to get some more help here, and we'll just do some walkthroughs and we get, and we don't have to do that very often. We, we cover it pretty quickly, uh, we've had to do that four or five times maybe with fights, where, hey, this is out of hand, we've got one popping off, and then we've got others wanting to do this, we just need to have a little bit of extra presence. And they don't even walk through the building necessarily, they just start showing up to the parking lot, and kids typ- typically just start doing more of what they need to do. So we try to limit that, but I mean, it is, and at the high school level, the, the size and the, you know, strength of students are, is a little bit different than the middle school level, and sometimes you need more help. And you know, there's a greater chance for serious injury at the high school level. Luckily, we haven't had, uh, we didn't have that this year, we didn't have a serious injury per se. We had some scrapes and stuff, you know, we've had, had some injuries, but not broken bones or serious concussions, or anyone being knocked out, or things of that nature. So I think we're working well together. I think the trust that, and the relationships that we have, that, from administration level with students, deans, all, everybody's, my relationships that I've built with some students, I think it helps and is, is just continuing to get better every year. So if we can keep laying that groundwork and um, building on that, then we're gonna continue to have a better learning environment for our students. And it's just the other things we do, as Michelle, now we also attend games. We provide supervision for games, we're at their homecoming dances, we're at their proms, we're, so they see our faces and know we're there to protect them, and just to make sure that they can have a successful, uh, a safe environment. So I think the more we can do that, the better as well, so. I, I enjoy what I do, so that, uh, it is fun. I had a, I'm just gonna share this story today because it's today's date. It's seven thirty this, in the morning, and I left my office, go to the hall, to a hallway station, and I see a young lady who I'm, who I'm familiar with. She had a rough start to the school year, but we built a pretty good relationship. She said, Mr. Burnett, I said, what do you need Kylie? Shouldn't say the name. And she's like, there's gonna be a fight, I said, where? She's like, April Fools. I said, you don't need to start our day that way. But it was funny, it was comical, and, and we, we, we had a good laugh first thing this morning about it, so. You know, it's just those little examples of relationships that you build with your, with some of the student body that they know you're there, and they realize you're there, and that you're there to help them.
Questions for Officer Burnett?
Of the, uh, the twenty-four fighting incidents, were they all in the building, or were some of them on, on buses? Is, is there a break, a breakdown between the two?
Uh, there were a couple on buses, but most are in the building. At our level, most of them are in the building. We've had some on buses in the past as well, but primarily these are in the building, fighting incidents, yes.
If, and I know, uh, Officer Robinson, you, you had more of your fights on the, on the buses, I just wonder, would it partner with MTD or something? I try to figure out what we can do possibly to help alleviate that, uh, going forward.
It's been a struggle, so we've been trying to do things um, for the past several years, actually. Um, like I said, it's just gotten worse this year, but it comes down to, we, you look for that smoke signal to put out the, so it doesn't happen in the school, especially like for us, our biggest thing is in a lunchroom. So then you put, you know, you put the smoke out, or at the, and you, you gotta always listen to what kids are talking about for the day. But a lot of it just, they just, it pops on the bus, like they, there's, there's a gr- there's some of them that can keep it quiet all day, and then they get on the bus and things just go from there. And a lot of it is, it's kind of hard to determine who's in it if you don't know, because we have so many students on those buses. Dr. Ebby Tatum can contest to that, because we've even had MTD come and like literally count the kids as they're going on. But they're covering the cameras, um, you know, it's, they think they can't get in trouble if it's on the bus by the school. So, or they get off the bus and then they're walking home, and then when they do come back to school the next day and they get in trouble at the school, it's like threshold to threshold, guys, you'd still, so those are the, they're trying to get it away from the school, thinking they're not gonna get in trouble at school. So that's why it happens where it is. But I mean, it's far and few, I mean, we still have a good ones that just pop off in, but our major incidences have happened on the bus.
Yeah, or, or the bathrooms, right?
The bathrooms, not so much anymore for us. And that, that is a cellphone thing. So they were, so we had Fight Clubs the last couple of years, where kids were going into the bathroom and videotaping the fights in the bathroom. Now that we don't have, now that we don't have cellphones, or if somebody does have a cellphone and they get caught videotaping a fight, they're now getting consequences. And then everybody that's seen in that video with a cellphone is getting consequences. We're not having the fights in the bathroom. I think, I mean, our fights are very minimal inside the bathrooms now, so.
So I was gonna address the MTD, so um, Mary Ann and I have met with MTD a couple times, and you know, some of those videos are hard to watch. So um, when we have had incidents where, um, I'm gonna use the green bus, for example. The green bus at UMS is a, a lot of kids. And so we've talked to MTD about um, moving forward, like they, like Michelle said, we've had, if I see something on a video and I'm like, there's way too many kids, they will, they have a little counter, um, so I can ask them to run a counter check on the bus. Or they will send one of their folks out to actually just count, to see how many students are getting on that bus. But for next year, because the green bus, I think, is one of our biggest concerns at UMS, um, you'll see this when we bring the MTD agreement in April. Um, well, April fifteenth, I think we'll bring it in at the next meeting. We are asking, uh, we've asked them to split the green bus. Um, so sixth grade center will have their own green bus. That bus will just go to sixth grade center and, and pick up sixth graders, and that's it. Um, and then we're gonna actually split the green bus that goes to UMS. Um, so that will, they, they right now have a really long one, um, so they're gonna have one, two of the shorter ones. Um, so we think that will at least um, solve some of those issues. And then uh, we have another route that we're gonna add, um, a gray route, which will help alleviate some of the bodies on some of the other buses. Um, but the green bus has, I think, primarily our biggest issue. So that'll, you'll see that um, in the contract, it'll be a little bit of an increase in cost, but we think it's worth it, um, for the little bit of extra money that we're gonna have to pay for our MTD contract. And it wasn't as much as we thought, so we'll let Jay Rank come and talk about that. But um, but yeah, it, it was, it's, it's worth it for the little bit of money we're gonna add to our contract to have those kids spread out significantly on the green route, and then adding that route to pull from like the gold and the orange and so.
I had a question. Is it only the MTD buses, or is it like also the yellow school buses as well?
Mainly it's the M- they're, they're packed, I'm gonna say it, they're packed and they're like sardines. So you have all these kids in there, they're not sitting down, they're standing up. When a fight happens, unfortunately, the kids that are sitting down, now they're trapped. So kids are climbing over them to get to see what's going on. And so it just, I mean, I don't, I don't know how the bus drivers handle it. I mean, we've had to have admin ride on buses to try to prevent things from happening. And if they're allowed to stand up, not everybody's sitting down, they pack on. So we can't really separate the large group to like put certain kids we know that don't get along with others on one bus to the other, and that's the issue, because they don't, I mean, everybody's short when it comes to staff members and working, and it, it comes down to that we share it with champagne. So it's route and time, and then it's a matter of getting drivers that will actually do those particular routes, so.
I think we, if we, if the board's okay, can we go right into the agreement?
Yeah.
Is that all right? So in that way, I can leave Michelle and um, Chad there. So um, we also have our representatives from Urbana Police here. So um, the agreement is basically unchanged. So we have had no um, parent complaints, we've had no administrator issues related to the, um, our last agreement. So unless the board had specific areas of the agreement. This year, we did things a little differently. In the past, we have gone, uh, we've taken the agreement to city council first. Um, but this year, we, this, this um, three-year plan, we did it a little differently. We're starting with the district first, so we can talk through, um, if there are areas in the agreement that we have concerns with before we go to council. But, um, so I'm looking at the one that says school resource program intergovernmental agreement. So we're asking again for a three-year agreement if possible. Uh, I know our last three-year agreement went very well. The language that's here is basically the language that we kinda negotiated um, the last go-round, and so we didn't, we've not seen any um, any incidents. We've not had any uh, major complaints about searching or metal detectors, or um, you know, how the SROs are communicating uh, with families or with the district. So we basically, um, Susan looked at this as well, have really no changes um, to bring forward. The only change really is the budgeting change. Um, and I met with Deputy Chief Smizer, and um, I, I'm not gonna be able to say her last name. Elizabeth, what is her, say it again? Hannan, the um, CFO role at the city, and we talked about the budget. And so what you have on your budget page, you have a single page, um, that should have the budget breakdown for you. And um, that is a one-year, um, that is the, the costs for um, the year to come, for twenty-five, twenty-six. Uh, we are in the middle of a um, union negotiated agreement. And so this is, this is what we have for the year to come. And then once they negotiate their new contract with the union, then we will get an update on that. And I am not finding my one pager. Yes. So, did you print yours or did? Okay, thank you. There, okay. I can't find mine. I'm just gonna use Sherri's. So, now give it back to her. So we have the comparison there for FY twenty-five, which is current year, to FY twenty-six. And I know if Matt or anybody from the police wanna address any questions you have, this is the standard billing that we had last time, where we have the salary, we have just basically the negotiated agreement that the council has with the police union. Uniforms are included here, equipment. We, we pay into an amount for them to do their training, which they typically do in the summer and when we're off of, off school, summer breaks, things like that. We also, we wanna make sure that they stay NASRO certified, which is the National Association for School Resource Officers. There are courses that they can do online or in person, so there's some money there for that. If you remember, what the police department does is they take all of their equipment, the radios, all of those things and break them into like a replacement cycle for the costs. So we're not paying all the costs at one time. They take the costs and spread it out and then we pay a chunk each year as part of their agreement. Vehicle maintenance is there. I know one of the, one of the vehicles was having a lot of issues there for a minute that needed a lot of work. I don't remember which one it was. And so if you look at the costs for this year compared to last year, so last year, three ninety-one, five thirty-three for two officers. And for next year, including raises, insurance changes, benefits, things like that, the cost would be four hundred and ten thousand for the district, and that's our portion. And then the city pays, their portion is twenty-five percent and ours is seventy-five percent. So, any specific questions about this? This is the same spreadsheet that we've had multiple times, just with different numbers. And this is first read, so we're not asking you to vote on this tonight. So if there's feedback from the community or if we have any stakeholders who wanna share feedback, if you could do that in the next two weeks. And then we'd like to bring the agreement back and the budget as part of the agreement and ask for a three-year, three-year renewal. And once the board votes on that on the fifteenth, then I can pass it back to Officer Bain and, and he can take that back to Deputy Chief Smizer. And they can have this same conversation at the city council level. In May, I think, right? Early May or something.
Any questions from the board?
Questions?
I, I, last time, three years ago, I remember watching at all the meetings here and also at the city council and the discussions that were held about the positives and negatives. And obviously, we know the positives. But a lot of the positives came from the family and the students. And I was wondering if there are any students that we could get some testimony for, to see how it's impacted their life. And I, and I think that that's what I was getting toward too when I asked about some positive things that have happened at the school. Because I know even the, after some of the hearings that we have held, some of the parents have said, "You need more security. You need to protect our children." And it'd be nice to get those parents, you know, to, to indicate what their needs are as well and that we're responding to their needs and to the students' needs.
So would you like us to do that? Maybe have you come to the school? I think that worked. Last time, we had one of the, we had, we set up a time and city council members came over and met with, they met with Chad, they met with teachers, they met with students. So that's something maybe Mr. Boozman could facilitate and set up a time. I think we just-
Well, in fact, I would have offered for city council members to also be present. I mean, do it jointly with city council members.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
The two bodies that have to approve this, yes.
Yeah, so we can work on that and set a date and, you know, inform our city council folks between now. I don't know if we, in the next two weeks, hopefully, between now and the fifth meeting, when we would ask you guys to vote on this on the fifteenth. We could probably set, I'm looking at Mr. Boozman, you think we could do that? Okay. Yep, okay. And they, and I'm sure, you know, our, our SROs probably know the names of some students that they could recommend or parents to come and be part of that, so.
Some of the, and possibly some of the parents who have spoken to us about it as well.
If you have those names, yes, specific people. Do you want to do it at UMS too? Or, or have, see if we could combine some? I know last time, that was just at the high school. We felt like our high school students are a little more, you know, they have the ability to inform an opinion and really share. And so I think that's why we hosted that at the high school last time.
Maybe some of the teachers from the middle school.
Oh, okay. That'd be good, okay. So Officer Robinson could do that.
Right, anyone else? All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Our last administrative report tonight is about the, revisiting the district twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen calendar.
So you guys don't all, oh, Mr. Cooper, you can go. But if you guys could stay for the handle with Kier, I don't know if- Corey, yes, okay. So Michelle and Chad, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Cooper.
We'll try not to have this take too long.
Yes. So the district twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven calendar. Oh, did I give her her?
She's found another one.
Okay. We're gonna talk about the calendar really quickly. So something that one of our committee members brought to my attention, and this is an oversight on my part, when we brought you the previous calendar, we neglected to include Election Day. So I was working under the mindset of elections happen every four, the major elections every four years. And we forgot that two years ago, Governor Pritzker passed legislation that in Illinois, Election Day is to be a school holiday for schools. And so because we approved for twenty-five, twenty-six, it did not impact that calendar. However, for twenty-six, twenty-seven, we neglected to include Election Day. So in adding Election Day, as you will remember, when we brought you the last calendar, we have to make some decisions when we only can have a hundred and seventy-six student attendance days. It isn't as easy as just adding Election Day and saying, okay, we're gonna, you know, add another day. It's, it's really hard sometimes to make those adjustments and to make things fit. So what we did is, you know how committee works, committees work? So I, I took this information back to our committee via email and asked them to share their insight into, or their thoughts around what should be the district's approach. And so what you have is a little picture with a pie chart there that shows you some of the options that we asked the committee. And I actually, these actually came from the committee members. Suggestions of what could we do in adding Election Day in? What would be some options to consider as trade-offs, so to speak, of how we can fit in one day and take something away, on the other hand. So we talked about four different options and those, that these were shared with the committee via a Google form. The first one is, as previously discussed, so this is something that, this is the language that the committee saw exactly. So I just copied it for you. At one of our meetings, we talked about the fact that there were, would be years where we would not be able to, for different reasons, have all three of our cultural holidays, a Good Friday, Yom Kippur, and Eid within the calendar. So next year, it, it just depends on the days, right? So for twenty-five, twenty-six and when, when some of these moving holidays, because they're on a lunar calendar, when they fall, sometimes they're gonna fall on a year where it is a school attendance day. And sometimes they would be observed on a weekend. So we looked ahead and we said that as a calendar committee, one of the things that we could do is do an alternation, so to speak. So in a year where we would have, we would have Eid as a holiday or an observance, then it, the next time we needed to make a decision around one of those religious holidays, then we would do a trade or alternate with Yom Kippur. So that was one of the first options that we shared with the committee. So to add Election Day to, to November third, we would keep Eid on March tenth, twenty twenty-seven. And because we're celebrating Eid and, I mean, we're observing Yom Kippur next year, in the following year in twenty-six, twenty-seven, we would observe Eid instead. So that was one of those options. We also had the option of extending the school year, which means adding a day to the end of the year. It's really hard, asking staff members and students to come back after Memorial Day. Yes, we've done it. But that was back in the days when we had snow days and we usually had days to make up. But now that we are not utilizing snow days at the end of the year, thinking about what the attendance would be on a Tuesday after the Memorial Day holiday weekend would be pretty minimal. So that, but that was an option that was suggested. Changed the proposed in the first semester, which is what we're doing for twenty-five, twenty-six, we added that additional day in December, right, right before winter break. And that is a, going to be a remote day for staff. So we added the day. We added a student attendance day, so the students in there, winter break on a Friday, and then staff come back on Monday as a virtual workday for them. So we said, hey, we could do that again as an option, maybe, to add that day at the end of the first semester. And this was a unique idea that one of the committee members came up with that I did not think of, is moving parent-teacher conferences to the Monday and Tuesday of fall break. And then we have a shorter fall break. That Wednesday, Thursday, Friday would be fall break and then we'd go into the weekend. And that the teacher, we wouldn't have to make some of those other changes to the in-service time. So you can see below the breakdown of how the committee members voted. So we had twenty-four responses. I think we only had one or two people who did not vote. One person voted to extend the school year. Three people voted to add an additional day to the first semester. Five people voted to move conferences to fall break and have a three-day break. And fifteen people voted to go to an alternating model for observing Yom Kippur and Eid when we would need to do that. So Sherri, as a member of the committee, and then one of our administrative assistants, Julia Stell, looked ahead and that document- I know, but I think we'll, we'll just look at Sherri's as a way to just kinda talk about the concept.
I think mine is different because it says the school year.
Yes.
And I think we're looking at it at the school year.
So if you look at this little chart that says from Member Langendorf, it gives you an idea of what that alternation might look like. So there are some years where we will be able to celebrate and observe all three, both Yom Kippur and Eid. But on the years where we have Election Day, vowels would be the every other year where we would need to make a decision about which, which religious day do we observe and which one do we not. It's also very complicated because they both are moving dates. So they aren't like a set day of the year, like, it's not like July fourth. Whereas July fourth, no matter what, these days kind of move on us. And so what Sherri did here is try to kinda look forward for a few years to give you an idea of what that alternation might look like.
The date on, of the twenty, twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven for Eid is March ninth and tenth.
Yes, March ninth and tenth. Thank you. So that's, I just wanted to give, have a visual for you to think about what that looks like. Cause I do think there, the years where we don't have Election Day, we'll be able to do both if they fall on a school day. One thing that I know Sherri's pointed out is the, we do have a religious leave day. And I know sometimes our staff members take that, but there, we need to do a better job as a district to promote and remind staff members that they have that religious leave day available to them. And so if it is a year, if, you know, if you're, you wanna celebrate Yom Kippur and it is not in our calendar or we're not celebrating it that year, then we definitely have that religious leave day available to staff and the same thing for Eid. And I know our people who celebrate the Christian holidays don't have to do that because Good Friday is one of those days that is just always a day off for us. So it, it, it kind of isn't, not, it's not equal because our, our Christian holiday, we don't have to make that choice. I am gonna stop talking. I know Sherri's on the committee, so I'll let her share. Any comments that she wants to add?
Yeah, I, I just wanna convey that, you know, I think that the, the dates speak for themselves. There's not much that we can do. We tried to choose the best one. The one objection that I have is that you're, you're conveying or you're giving the impression that you're alternating. You cannot alternate. If a, if a, if a holiday falls on a weekend, that person who celebrates that holiday doesn't have to make a choice. But the person who does have a holiday during the week and that, and doesn't have the religious day off, that person has to make a choice. That student, that family has to make a choice whether or not to come to school that day or to follow their religion. And it seems like every year and that, that Eid has a day off is a day, or they don't have it, is a day that it's a weekend. So they're not really being able to sacrifice anything. It's, it's pretty easy, you know, to see. So the only exception or the only requirement I would, would be is to take off alternate because that gives a-
Oh, sure.
A, an impression that somebody is giving up something and someone's making a choice, and it's not. It's, you're not alternating it just to be fair. You're alternating it, but it just so happens that it works out that one day is on a weekend. So it's really not alternating it, just the way it worked out. The only thing else that I would have, see if we could consider in the future for staff, on staff only, is that when there's a, a year and there's just, I think there are two of them, where Yom Kippur is not given, I believe. That doesn't, yeah, went one. There might be just one next, within the next five years. But if staff could be given an additional religious day so that they can take a religious day for Rosh Hashanah and for Yom Kippur and not have to use a personal day for a holiday, in as much as they're not being given that day off.
Sure.
And I, and- One region, one religious day.
Yeah, there's-
One religious day.
So-
Yeah.
So, and as I shared with Sherri is because our benefit time is part of our contracted agreement with the union, that would be something that we would have to, next year, when we're negotiating our next contract, talk about that as an additional benefit leave option with our UVA.
I think that would be fair and reasonable, so, thank you.
And again, you know, I don't know, I know this is definitely something that is a Governor Pritzker initiative. And, you know, I don't know how long he may be, you know, I, I've heard that he may run for, again, for governor, he may not. But I do anticipate if, and if he is no longer the governor in this next term, we more than likely would probably go back to only having days off for presidential, you know, national elections. But this is where we are for now, so just to project it out, we thought it would be useful to just allow you to see that.
So I wanted to add that at the delegation, at the conference, it did come up and it was supported that if your school does, is not an election poll location, then the school or the district can apply for an exception to having that day off, just like some do for Veterans Day as well. Because there are lots of opportunities to vote. Because there are lots of opportunities to vote, except for vote, right?
Okay. So this is just for you to, this is a first read of the change again. So we're not asking you to approve this tonight. Um, we wanted you to bring back a, once, again, we, this is twenty six, twenty seven, so we've got time. Um, so we're not gonna vote tonight, but we wanted you to have the information and have the, both of the charts to look at and to go back. And, um, we will look at an approval for our April fifteenth meeting.
Great. And thank you and thank you to the calendar committee for your continued hard work on, on this. It's not easy.
Very patient, yes.
Um, our study, first topic tonight is lifting up, uh, for Handle With Care presentation.
Okay, so we have.
And Katie Kelly is joining on Zoom, so.
Okay, I was gonna introduce her. So Katie Kelly, um, is the, uh, CEO and founder of, um, Handle With Care. And so I'm gonna invite, um, Corey Coker and Matt, are you coming up too? Perfect. Um, to the table. It is a, um, a, a kind of new initiative to East Central Illinois, but not new, um, in the state. And so, uh, Kelly, I mean, Katie Kelly is gonna hop in there. Um, her presentation is the Handle With Care. And this would be a collaborative effort between Urbana School District and Urbana Police, um, which is why we have our guests from Urbana Police here joining us.
Can you hear us, Katie?
Everyone hear me okay?
Okay, yes.
All right, fantastic. Well, thank you, Dr. Ivory Tatum and, um, school board members. It's great to be here this evening. My name is Katie Kelly and I'm originally from Peoria, Illinois. So Central Illinois has my heart. My background is in local government and nonprofits, uh, specifically at, at the intersection of juvenile justice, public health and education. Oh, are you asking my video? Let's see, you guys get to see my face? I don't know. It's dark over here.
If you want.
See, you can still see me. Uh, didn't look like it turned on.
It, it's fine either way.
Okay, I'll, I'll stop it. So it doesn't keep trying to take bandwidth. Um, so I used to work for a research institute that facilitated countywide efforts to support, um, youth and stem the school to prison pipeline. I then worked at the Peoria Police Department as a management analyst, working on our violence prevention grants. And that path led me to creating Lifting Up. And the reason behind it was that every day I got to see the school to prison pipeline in action. I would hear about incidents happening in the community, um, major search, search warrants being executed, youth being displaced from their home, for example. And then sure enough, the next day or within a couple of days, before the end of the school day, we had some of those kids involved, um, being picked up and brought to our juvenile unit for fights or other behavior. The problem with all of that was that no one at school knew what those students had been through. So as was mentioned earlier by the SRO, when the students were in that fight or flight, when they've had the clenched fist and they're, they're feeling that aggression, that can because, that can be because of their experience trauma. But if school staff doesn't know that, they don't have that background, they can only take the behavior on face value. So what Handle With Care does is helps connect the dots around the occurrences of traumatic events or adverse childhood experiences between first responders and schools to let key staff know in your buildings, hey, something may have happened to this student. And so they are ready with their trauma responsive supports and processes. What we do that's different than the national model is that we automate that communication. Uh, in the typical Handle With Care model that is being implemented across the country and throughout the state of Illinois, the burden is on the officers to recognize a situation fits the criteria, identify that youth are present and then take the extra step to communicate that information to the school, either by filling out a form, opening an app, sending a text or sending an email. That might seem like an easy thing to do, but when your offices are going to dozens and hundreds of calls for service each shift, that is just one more thing that can fall through the cracks. What we do with Lifting Up is tighten that net and automatically send the communication if the data fits the criteria. So it's here, so here's how it works. We start by receiving, uh, we, Lifting Up, start by receiving a data export from the police and the sheriff's office. This data is very limited. We have very few pieces of data. It is incident date, incident ID, incident type and incident location. We only receive this information for incidents that are related to adverse childhood experiences because that is what we have information about from the research. So it's not every single police contact. It's focused to those incidents that we know can cause students harm in their central nervous system and impact their ability to learn and engage at school. At the same time, we receive, again, a limited data export from the school with certain key pieces of student data, including, uh, their basic demographics, their school and their grade and their custodial addresses. And then we process those two data sets in our secure cloud location. And if there is a match, meaning a qualifying incident occurs at a student's home, a very discreet email is sent to specific trained individuals at each school. That would be the principal and a designated and trained student support staff member and possibly the SRO. Now, why is this important? Because as we've heard all day, you all are working hard and the school staff are working hard to keep kids in school. You want to increase attendance. You want to improve academic performance. You want to increase graduation rates. But adverse childhood experiences can undermine all of those efforts and impact the education outcomes of students who experience them through no fault of their own. But that is not their destiny. The negative effects and possible risk factors of ACES can be mitigated. One of my favorite studies, and I cite it all the time, was done by the Illinois ACES Response Collaborative. They studied students at Chicago Public Schools and found that students that had two ACES and two protective factors had a fifty-three percent decreased likelihood of mental health problems, specifically suicidality, compared to their peers that had two ACES but no protective factors. That, that is powerful enough, as it is, but it gets even better when you learn what those protective factors are. They are a trusted adult at school and they play a sport. Not that they have access to impatient treatment or weekly mental health counseling or a higher socioeconomic status. They just need connection. And that's what schools have in abundance, opportunities for connection. The problem is, because you have so many students in your buildings and in your classrooms, it can be hard to know which student needs help exactly when they need it. ACES are like an invisible weight that students are carrying in their backpacks and into your schools. But on the face of it, on the outside, you can't tell which one of these backpacks is heavy. That's what Handle With Care does. We tell you, look, Josie in the pink backpack, she is carrying extra weight today. She needs extra connection and support. So it helps pinpoint and direct resources and staff time to students who need them exactly when they need them, so that we can effectively have early intervention and prevention of those negative outcomes. Our goal with Handle With Care is not to pry. It is not to dig into students' family lives. However, the effects of adverse childhood experiences cross into your buildings. And so the whole goal is to help students get out of toxic stress and be ready to learn by making those connections. We know that when students feel safe and they have an opportunity for connection, that is when they're able and ready to learn. And the Handle With Care response process, pardon the incorrect acronym right there, um, one of the communities we work with calls it Youth TIP. The Handle With Care response process supports this. When staff receive the email each day, they work together as a team to figure out who is the best per- that contact, make that connection with the student. Do they already know the student and have a relationship or is this going to be an opportunity for an introduction? Once you decide who's best, then someone is making that neutral connection through a check-in. And this is all through an indirect, neutral process. The staff are not referencing anything that happened and they go through a training so that they know the best way to connect with the student in this way. And it's just to speak with them and connect with them as humans, as people. We care and it lets them know we care about them, both in their life outside of school and within the school building. With the ultimate goal of getting them back to the classroom through support and consistent connection over time. So it's not just a one and done. There's that neutral check-in because of the notification, but then there should be opportunities to continually engage very quickly, two minutes throughout the year, so that that student now has someone that they trust. And this model, that, that multi-step process is rooted in brain science. I don't know if any of you are familiar with Conscious Discipline by Becky Bailey, but she walks through how a child's brain reacts in their different states. So if you look to the left, when a person, anyone, experiences a traumatic event or an adverse childhood experience, you might know this as fight, flight or fawn. Those innate reactions that we have to trauma. She references those as a survival state. So a student can still be in survival state even the next day and they don't even know it. Their central nervous system has reacted. And the only way to get someone out of survival state is to make them feel safe. But that doesn't mean everything's okay. There's actually a step in between. So the next stage that a person goes through in their brain is then they reach this emotional state. They've moved into their limbic system. And now the only way that they can move out of that is through that connection, through that neutral check-in that we have established. Then and only then is the student moving into executive state, which is the place where they're actually able to engage their prefrontal cortex and be able to learn. If a student is not in that place, it doesn't matter how many hours they spend in the classroom, they are not able to learn. So the Handle With Care model helps us to quickly and effectively get students who may be experiencing trauma brain or this survival state, all the way up to executive state and ready to learn in just a few minutes. So here is just a quick snapshot of what the email looks like. It will have the name of the building and then a list of student ID numbers. That's it. We do not share what the incident was or any details. Number one, because we don't want to pry. We don't want to violate any privacy, but mainly because it shouldn't matter. The person who's doing the check-in should follow the same protocol regardless of what the incident was. They're going to check in with that student. And so we keep it neutral. In addition, uh, if your district were to implement this system, everyone who receives emails and anyone else that is, um, at district leadership will have access to a data dashboard where all of this data is tracked and visualized for you. This hap- this is visualized at a district level. So where you can see here, total impacts by grade, that would instead be total impacts by building. And so you all can make decisions around, once you see the, the level of trauma exposure that's happening, you might make decisions about resource allocation and things like that. And then, for example, a building principal would be able to dive into their building and see the same information, but on a grade level, again, so that they can make strategic decisions. You can also track here in the bottom right corner, this is one of my favorite impacts of Handle With Care in our system, is that we can track the cumulative impacts of these events per student. Because we know that when a student experiences four or more ACES, their risk for negative future health outcomes and criminal justice system involvement goes up exponentially. So as we see students trending towards that number, we can make sure that resources are available to help with that early intervention and prevention. And that really follows your existing multi-tiered systems of support. Um, within it, by the way, this is a real example from Peoria Public Schools, with the student ID redacted, of course. Um, the team can also and is recommended and encouraged daily to go in and actually click on the student ID number to see the details around that student. Specifically their task exposure to these types of events. This is where, for example, the social worker would, or the counselor would be able to see, oh, is this their first? Or is this their third? How close together were these events? And what resources might I need to be prepared with when I make my check-in with this student? So they can go in prepared. You can also take a look from an incident perspective. So by clicking on the incident ID, you can see all the students that were affected by that incident. So basically you're getting the household perspective. Those students might all be in the same building. They might be in different buildings. It allows for opportunity for coordinating care for the family, if it ever rises to that level. And as I mentioned, the intervention process is not, uh, we are not standing up anything separate, anything new. The Handle With Care notifications simply activate the existing multi-tiered systems of support that are in place in each building. So, um, before we were to begin, every building would fill in this flow chart, which people do we have available at tier two and tier three? What resources do we have available at tier two and tier three? And what are the protocols? So that those are naturally activated if the student is showing that they need that higher level of support. And in addition, again, this follows MTSS, but I always like to show this slide as well to serve as a reminder that Handle With Care is not one-dimensional. Adverse childhood experiences affect every conceivable component or element of a person. So it's not just a mental health issue. It is not just an academic issue. It is not just a safety issue. It is all of those things. And so when we will train your staff, we go through a lot of exercises to get them to think about this from multiple perspectives. How does attendance play in? How do nurses' visits play in? How do discipline referrals play in? And what about IEPs for your special education students? These are all factors and Handle With Care is just one more piece of data for your team to consider as they work to support the whole child. Um, I'll just touch on this briefly. It's in your packet, but as you might be wondering, how is it legally possible to do this? There are a couple of key steps that need to be taken, um, in order to allow the data sharing that will need to happen. So, um, the first step that we have here today on the agenda is a vendor contract that basically makes Lifting Up a, an approved vendor and allows us to receive your student data according to FERPA and SOPA standards. And then once that's executed, we would facilitate an intergovernmental MOU between you, the police department and the sheriff's office. It's basically the data is coming from first responders to the school. Lifting Up is simply the intermediary that we are. that we are receiving the data and processing it on your behalf for you. You own and control the data. If the contract were to end for any reason, you receive all the data and we delete it. And then, from there, it's a very simple process. Um, we have already verified that all of the record systems of all three agencies have the capability to set up the data exports that we need. So the data will come automatically and daily without anyone needing to do anything each day. Once that is set up, we would then schedule, um, the implementation training with staff so that we can be very sure that everyone knows how the data is to be used, how it is not to be used, and how to connect with students um, effectively, appropriately, and in a research-informed way. We will also maintain quarterly contact with the team for support, to answer questions, to share stories and data across buildings, and really create that peer learning cohort. Okay, that was a lot of information. Um, does anyone have any questions? I can go back to anything. And I know we also have several folks here who can step in and add anything that, uh, I might have missed.
About board members, any questions? Uh, I guess what I have is like, um, how do you ensure, uh, the, um, a correct match between, uh, the, uh, the police report and the student in our, in, in our database?
Very great question. So that is all done by address matching. Um, there is a step that is done during the, during the analysis process, which, by the way, happens in like three minutes. Um, wi- with both data sets, for every address, we first verify that address independently um, to match it with USPS standard addresses. So then, once both addresses are standardized, then we're able to effectively look for a match in both data sets. We, we are based on location as opposed to, for example, student name for a couple of reasons. Number one is that addresses are easy to standardize. Um, and names are not. There are often many people with the same name, even if you collect date of birth. There are way too many, um, opportunities for misspellings. But then also, what we have seen in other communities where we have both an officer-initiated process and the automated process operating together, sometimes the officer only sees one sibling. The others might be upstairs, or they might not be home, but that doesn't mean they aren't impacted by the traumatic event that happened. And so, um, that's why we use address, and that's how we ensure the match.
We have a high number of unhoused students in this district, a- as well as students with high levels of mobility. The district has a hard time keeping up with, with student addresses at times. So I'm just, I mean, I, I, I like this program. I'm just giving you a heads up that, um, for some of our student body, it's going to be a challenge to make sure this is accurate.
Agreed. Yes, that's definitely, um, that's definitely a challenge that we face with, with every school district we work with.
Now, the, the other question I have is, I mean, I, I'm not a hundred percent familiar with, with FERPA or SOPA, but what assurances would the district have that, uh, you know, the student addresses aren't shared with any, any outside agencies, federal or otherwise?
I could talk a little bit about that too.
Yeah, that's part of the security stipulation.
But, uh, yeah, so we have with all of our, uh, people, uh, I have our student drive- data privacy page here, uh, which answers kind of all of the things that govern our, our, uh, data. So, uh, for all the companies that we work with, that we have any data sharing, we have to have data agreements in place, just to kind of how they maintain that data and how they do it, uh, is all kind of outlined on this page. Uh, if anybody's interested, there's some videos that cover each of those topics as well. If you're asking specifically about what internal precautions they're using, I'll kick that back over to Katie. But, uh, we'll have data privacy agreements, uh, legal agreements with them uh, in place for, to protect the district and our student data.
Anyone else?
And that's covered in the MOU, um, with the Urbana Police that we have here too, about the data sharing.
Yep, and there'll be a separate, we're required to have a separate SOPA agreement.
I think the other thing that, um, when our attorney, uh, re- previewed this and kind of, she was in communication with Katie, is Katie mentioned that, um, the people who would receive this information would be trained. Um, and, you know, when we've talked with her, that would be a small core group of people. It wouldn't be like the whole threat assessment team, um, because we want the people who would be interacting with the students to be trained because we, of course, we don't want to re-traumatize our kids. We don't want to bring, you know, ki- when Katie Zoomed with us, she gave us some really, um, very clear language that we would train our sta- like our social worker or the principal or whoever might go to the student directly, um, and how they engage with that person around, you know, you don't say, oh, I heard the cops were outside your house last night. I mean, you know, and that, and that happens, right? Like, kids say that to other kids. Um, unfortunately, we might have adults say that to a student. I heard the, you know, I heard the cops were outside your house last night. So we would have, be very intentional in the way we would train those staff members to approach our young people. So again, not to re-traumatize them, um, but I think the keeper of, of the, all of that information, um, we're going to have to really talk with those folks that are trained about the importance of that confidentiality. And that they're the keepers of that information, and it isn't something that they come back to the building and talk about in a lounge or in other spaces. So, um, I think the training that we receive from Katie and her team, um, are going to be critical.
Anyone else? Because I have one last question. Is there any financial obligation from the district?
So on the, at the, uh, last page of the agreement, um, there is a, um, Handle With Care implementation using, uh, lifting up fees. So, um, this was brought to me very, um, interestingly, um, from Officer Coker from Urbana Police, but also, um, from the United Way. So, um, the United Way, Bev Baker, who, um, is one of the executive leaders, leaders in the, um, United Way of Champaign County, um, they approached me with this program, um, and said, hey, we really, we really want to support you in, um, offering this to the young people of Urbana, and United Way would like to be a partner with you in this. And so, um, because we are kind of calling it a pilot, we're saying we're going to do it this year as a pilot to see. Um, I think the one thing I, Mr. Guzman is still here in the audience, but we've had, um, a couple of Zooms now with um, district administrators. Um, Matt Bain is part of our district, uh, crisis committee. Tori is one of our crisis reps. So we've talked about this at the crisis team. And there were concerns, not so much around data sharing, but just the number of reports that we might get in a day. And I did not, um, recently, until very recently, as, as we've been going through this and talking about it, um, I've been in a space with Chief Boone, and we talked about it, and I've heard numbers from our officers. I didn't re- realize with our small community here in Urbana, how many police contacts there really are. Um, and especially like even incidents like of domestic abuse and intimate partner violence. I did not know the number of, just the sheer number of calls that they're going out into our homes. Um, and so it, when Bev Baker and Cory came to us with this, we thought, wow, this is great. But then when we talked about it, we thought, how are we going to manage, you know, if we get a hundred of these or, you know, how many are we going to be getting on a daily basis? And so in our recent, um, interactions with the police, we, we've said that we are, one, going to make sure that we can manage it on their end and our end, and that we're not overloading our administrators or the very small team of people who would be getting this information. So, um, but then we asked that question of Katie, um, I can't remember what the number was, Katie. Did you say not more than like in Peoria? Are you saying, and Peoria is what, four times the size of Urbana, maybe five? In turn, well, I mean, in terms of their students. Um, go ahead, Katie.
Um, if you don't mind, would it be okay if I popped up another slide?
Sure.
I think I can replace. Okay, so, you know, no community is exactly like another.
Yes.
Um, but I did want to share with you some comps from other communities. Um, I expect that you will be around five hundred for the year. Um, or so, my, and I kind of ballparked that based on what we've seen, and, and we tend to get around ten percent of a student body. Um, numbers-wise. This is from our school districts, not including Peoria Public Schools in Peoria and Tazewell Counties. Peak in District 108 is most comparable size-wise. Um, I don't know if it's necessarily comparable from a crime rate perspective, but based on the number of students, um, they, they do have quite a lot of calls for service. So I think that's one way to look at it. And before we get started, our process is to run a historical analysis, which is not one hundred percent accurate, of course, because we're looking backwards, but we take one point in time attendance, student data, against one year of the qualifying incident data from the police and the sheriff. And we populate that into the data dashboard for your team before the school year starts. And we found that that's a great way just to give everybody an idea of what to expect for their building. Because like your high school might have more activity than one of your other smaller buildings, or it just very much depends. You all know your neighborhoods, your school buildings, and how many students you have at each. So we think that will be a way to prepare people. And if we need to adjust the filter criteria of what incidents are included or excluded, we can.
Yes.
Wow. And then just one more point, it's not necessarily exactly on topic, but what we have found, this is Peoria and Tazewell, but it is true for DeKalb, and it is true for the five districts we work with in New Jersey. The mo- most common is adult arrest. That is usually between fifty and sixty percent. And then the next most common is violence incidents. But we do capture things like mental health calls, um, deaths, certain substance abuse-related incidents, fires, child welfare, those kinds of things that crosswalk to Aces. And then we will provide a breakdown for you of the different types of violence. And for most communities, by far, domestic violence is the top. But there are also, of course, weapons charges, sexual violence, and general violence. And by that, I mean, um, your assault, your battery, uh, things that aren't specifically domestically labeled, that, that more general violence of fights, things like that. So, um, Dr. Ivory Tatum and her team will get this usually twice a year, but we can do it more frequently. That aggregated high-level view of what's going on and what are your students experiencing that they are bringing with them to school.
Thank you, Katie. That was really helpful. Um, and back to Paul's question about the fees. So I mentioned United Way because they, um, have agreed to help fund our pilot this year and cover the costs. Um, and the Community Coalition, um, is the other group that is, um, has stepped up and said that they really want to, um, they want to explore the opportunity of, maybe this is something that we might do in Champaign. Um, and because we're a lot smaller and because of our, um, our relationship with Urbana Police, I mean, we have a very collaborative partnership. Um, so we are a, a really good community to do this, um, and pilot it here. And I, I believe their conversation is about possibly, um, doing it in Champaign. And so the Community Coalition, uh, stepped up and said that they would pay for the other portion not covered by United Way. So those fees of, um, seven thousand nine hundred and seven dollars would be covered by our, um, community partners.
That, that's per year?
Um, that is per year.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you for having us, by the way. Uh, my name is Cory Coker. I'm a lieutenant with the Urbana Police Department. I oversee the Criminal Investigations Division or the Detective Division. I can assure you, it's a lot more cooler on TV and movies than it is in real life. Uh, but cool nonetheless. Um, I think it's a wonderful idea. I actually helped implement the Crisis Co-Response Team for the Urbana Police Department. And with any additional s- uh, resources to have is better than not having them. Uh, and I think it's just a better, uh, clear communication line to the school officials, uh, and using Katie as our vessel to, to get that information to, uh, take a look at some kids that are having some issues, uh, that, that need some attention. I think it's extremely important that we're, that we're all taking care of all the, all of our kids.
Anyone else? I mean, I think that the training alone is probably worth the money, even if we had to pay it ourselves, so.
Oh, absolutely.
Um, I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of progressing forward.
So you have the agreement and, um, an MOU from Urbana Police. I just realized that the one that you have a copy of, the MOU, has, um, some highlighted areas that we'll make sure we fix, um, by our next meeting before Paul's or the board approves it, if you approve it. So we'll make sure we get the twenty twenty-five date on there. That one still has an, an older highlighted date on there that we need to change. But we'll make sure that the, um, for the, uh, approval meeting, you have the, um, right date on the back of that MOU. And, um, we'll be asking the board to take action on this at our next meeting. Anything else you guys might add?
So, you know, thanks, thanks for your patience on hanging out tonight.
Thank you, Cory. And Matt, you're staying in, are you going to stay in for the crisis committee?
I can.
Yeah, okay. It's short.
It's mine. You guys have made it so easy on me so far tonight, like.
All right. Uh, next study topic is security and reunification.
Thank Katie. Thank you, Katie.
Thank you all so much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
You too.
Uh, study topic eleven dot two is our security and reunification update. Love you, John.
Yeah, and we wanted to just go ahead and, uh, provide some information, uh, about some of the updates based on some of the trainings that we've been doing. Uh, some of them, uh, combined with law enforcement and other emergency services, uh, about kind of our crisis response and reunifications, uh, going forward. So we've been going to a couple of things, uh, through the I Love You Foundation. Uh, if you guys haven't heard that, uh, it was founded, uh, by Ellen and John Michael Keys in two thousand and six, following a school shooting that took the, uh, life of their daughter Emily. And so as that was happening, uh, in the classroom, the last message she sent to her parents was a text that said, I love you guys. So they kind of took that, uh, that name and started a mission to, uh, kind of standardize and, uh, elevate what we can do for, uh, incidences in schools, crises and emergencies to have a better response, uh, and then a, a better, uh, follow-up of what we can do after that with reunification. Uh, so right now, it's used by thousands of school districts, uh, and organizations nationwide. Uh, one of the nicest things about it is all of their resources are a hundred percent free. They don't charge a licensing fee or anything. Uh, some of the trainings have some associated costs, but, uh, if you, any district wants to use any of their stuff, it's all free. Uh, so this is broken down into kind of two separate parts, uh, and feel free to jump in if you have anything to add. Uh, but, so the first part is the emergency. So this is the crisis. Uh, and there's something called the Standard Response Protocol. Uh, so this is based on five, uh, actions, and each action is followed up with a directive. So the five actions, as it happens, uh, correlate very well with our, uh, Crisis Go, uh, system that we've implemented. They have like a few little tweaks in there, uh, but all the graphics, all the words that they say and everything, uh, corresponds to what we already have in Crisis Go. Uh, all of the checklists that administrators get, uh, are also based on the I Love You Guys protocol. Uh, so that works out very well. So the five ones are, uh, hold, which is basically stay in your room, stay where you are. Uh, secure, which is if you're outside, get inside, but then you can kind of continue going on, having your school day. Uh, we had an incident outside of one of our schools, uh, a few months ago, I think, where, uh, police were looking for somebody outside the school. They weren't anywhere near coming in the school, so they were able to, uh, come in from recess, stay inside, and continue with their day. Uh, lockdown, uh, Uh, lockdown, uh, is the kind of, uh, something that is happening in the school, so get into your classroom. Uh, and then it comes up with a little message that says lock flights out of sight. Uh, evacuate is that you need to get out of the school. And then shelter is kind of for, uh, more like weather emergencies, or, uh, I think there's maybe if there's a chemical spill at the university. So, clear, simple instructions. Uh, all of this is based on, uh, the National Instant Command System, uh, which kind of, uh, has a hierarchy of who reports to who. Uh, so when things come in, you automatically know, uh, what you need to do next and who you need to talk to next. Uh, improving coordination between students and staff, uh, but especially improving coordination between first responders. Uh, and reducing commu- uh, confusion by having common, uh, terminology and language. Uh, so this, again, as it is tied in with our Crisis Go, has like uniform things that you can do for each incident. Uh, again, we provide people the latitude to make good decisions and make changes. But if you're in an, uh, incident, uh, it's nice to have kind of a standard operating procedure where, oh, there's a weather incident and it says, get people in, get them into a, into your hallway, and it tells you what to do, and you don't have to spend a lot of time thinking about it. So, uh, we did do a training, uh, at ILEUS, the, uh, Illinois Law Training Institute on the other side of Urbana. Uh, this was a two-day training, uh, with law enforcement, uh, school personnel, fire, EMT, and some university. And ILEUS staff were there as well. Uh, so this kind of walked through from the very start of an emergency, uh, how you put people in command, how you formed task force and groups, and what everybody's role was through the whole, uh, participation. So we did a couple of these exercises from start to finish, uh, from like the first, like, we did a mostly active shooter. So from the first, like, notification, uh, all the way through reunifying students with their parents at the end, uh, of the training. So it was very valuable. We sent five staff members, uh, to that training, uh, where we were able to get a lot of this information and bring it back. Uh, and before I go on, we'll be updating, uh, some of our documentations in the school at the start of the next school year. Uh, right now, uh, we have kind of the opposite of standard terminology, where some schools might call something a hard lockdown or a code red, or a code blue, or like, they all kind of have different things, uh, but standardizing them so that as students go through different schools and staff might change schools, uh, that everybody has kind of the same thing to work from. Uh, just a little bit about the Crisis Go. I know a lot of you were here when we implemented the system, so I'm gonna go a little bit quicker, but, uh, stop me if you have any questions. Uh, Crisis Go is our emergency notification system. So this has, uh, as people, something's happening in the school, it makes it very easy. You don't have to think a lot about it. If you click on one of the things, if you see something that looks like red flames, click on the red flames. Uh, it will automatically initiate a call to nine-one-one to notify them. And then it will, for your school, automatically initiate, uh, that incident at your school. Uh, it has, uh, checklists for what you need to do. If you have a medical emergency, call nine-one-one, notify the nurse. Uh, it also has, as you're in an incident, it has all of our class rosters, so you can send out a roster event to teachers, and they can tell you who they have with them, and you can find out who's missing or who you still need to find. Uh, you can also send really simple communications back and forth, uh, between teachers and administrators, where you can ask them, is everybody safe? Do you need any medical attention? When we had the lockdowns at the high school, we used that a lot for people getting escorted to the bathrooms and easy things like that.
Um, John, all the teachers have already implemented app and their phones?
Uh, we highly recommend that teachers put it on their phones, but it's not required. But all the classroom computers that they have also have it, uh, pre-installed on their computers. Uh, and those are our devices, so we just push it out to them. Uh, one nice thing, since you brought it up, since it's on the computers and on our district stuff, uh, whenever, uh, a crisis does get initiated, it also, for all the, uh, viewboards that we have in all the classrooms, they will turn bright red and have just the, like, notification of the emergency on the viewboards as well, if they're turned on, if they're turned off.
Is access- accessible for parents?
Uh, this part is not accessible for parents.
Okay.
Uh, but there are some corollary products that you can set up groups for parent notifications and, uh, student notifications. Uh, there is also in here a way to contact parents directly from the app, but it doesn't push out the notification like it does for the school. Uh, so I am, I think, hopefully enough people have this here. So I am gonna go ahead and show you how you can, uh, initiate an incident. So I will set this to our training group. Uh, and I will say it's a drill. And I'll say test again. And then when I go, you just slide descend at the bottom, and it should. Je- Jennifer must have hers turned off.
I turned mine off from a meeting I was in.
Okay. So that's what it sounds like for the teachers. And then from there, you can also start to give them updated information. Uh, so like the directives, like, oh, if you're in the east wing, evacuate if possible. Uh, we have been using this also for all of our drills throughout the year. So as we're doing our drills, uh, it's kind of a nice reminder for teachers in kind of a safe environment, like, oh, this is what you're gonna get. And like, it's a fire, so we're gonna head outside now.
Sorry, a question, I have a question. Why the, why it right now is recommended to a teacher and it's not like made them to have it?
Uh, so they're personal devices. Uh, we don't really have, uh, the ability to require them to do things on their personal devices. I will say, I think, a large number, ninety to ninety-five percent, uh, as I've been going through doing the trainings, have it on their phones. Uh, but, yeah.
And one of the benefits is, like, um, in, in a real situation, you're gonna be getting all the communication through the app, telling you, um, you know, when the event is over, where to go. Um, and so if you are one of those people who has chosen not to download it on your phone, then you're not gonna be getting those on-the-minute responses and notifications. And so, um, I think at this point, this is what, year three?
Yeah.
Most people have downloaded it at this point. The only people that I think don't are the people who don't use smartphones, like, who just kind of, there's still people who have older phones that, um, you know, are not using a smartphone.
And for some of the messaging portions of it, you are able to also send out mass texts.
Yeah, or emails.
But you kind of have to click a couple extra things. So I think administrators, in the heat of the moment, probably aren't always doing that. But, uh, we did have this, uh, we had a small fire at DPW, I think, last year, uh, and this was very helpful for that as well.
It wasn't a real fire, John.
It, it was a small fire in a utility room that didn't, yes, it was, there was not a danger.
Yes. I saw Paul look at me like, "A fire?"
Teachers who don't have smartphones, then, um, are they being given, like, one of the little, not a laptop, but the little iPad that...
They all have a district assigned laptop.
And...
And then they have the Vusonic monitors in their rooms.
I know they have a, a laptop, but I mean, the, the smaller one, the tablet.
No, we don't.
Because that would be something they could carry with them if you had to.
Most of the people who haven't downloaded it is also because they, you know, don't want, uh, I don't know, Big Brother, um, kind of, you know, like, it is kind of a Big Brother thing, right? Like, to download and everyone kind of, you know, yeah, so, yeah.
And when you install it, I've explained it, I think, multiple times, but if your phone is on silent or vibrate, it overrides whatever setting that is and goes to maximum volume, sorry, Mary Ann. Uh, but, uh, so like, when you install it, you do have to click, like, allow this app to, like, change my volume and stuff. So it, like, requires a few extra permissions. Uh, so that is the Standard Response Protocol. This is kind of the emergency where everything's happening. Uh, once the emergency is ready to kind of transition to the reunification phase, so the emergency's been contained, uh, whatever's happening, uh, there's no more, like, imminent danger, uh, then we move to the next phase, which is reunification. So now we've got four hundred kids and four hundred parents who really want their kids. Uh, so getting through that in, like, a really consistent and, like, organized way, but also doing things as quickly as we can, uh, because parents really like to have their kids back. Uh, so the next portion is the standard reunification method. Uh, so this is a structured process to reunite students. Uh, it's, again, kind of very organized and rigorous, uh, that it makes it so you kind of minimize mistakes and ensure, like, the maximum amount of accountability while still, uh, getting through, uh, the system. So we did have a one-day reunification training also at ILEUS, uh, that we sent six, six staff members to. Uh, so during this training, this was focused a lot more on school personnel, uh, although there was some other law enforcement there as well. Uh, but we went through kind of several iterations of the reunification, uh, all of the different parts and roles of it. Uh, we're very happy, as we were going through it, I think, to, uh, realize that our current reunification system that we had designed a couple years prior, uh, really correlated really well with the, uh, the reunification from this system, just with some common terminology and, like, titles and names changed. So we will be running a mini-training at our next crisis meeting. Uh, also as part of the exercise, they let you check out the, uh, reunification, uh, training kit. So we have this, this is full of all the kind of bits of how you can reunify students. So, again, consistency and clarity, uh, effective, rapid responses. Oh, and, uh, so I'm gonna walk you guys really quickly through the reunification process here. And I've got it up right here. Uh, so step one, as people come into the reunification area, uh, they're greeted by, uh, someone at the door, a greeter, uh, who, uh, explains the process to them and gives them a clipboard with one of these cards. The card is a two-part card, uh, that has the student information on the top, along with the parent information and signature. And then at the bottom, it has the student information again, uh, so that this card gets separated, and now you have a way to track, uh, the student going through the system. So parents fill out that card, uh, they come through. The next station is the checkers, uh, who take the card, uh, verify the parent's identity, uh, to make sure that they are who they say they are. Uh, if they don't have something, that they can easily verify their identity right there. Uh, there's a secondary checker station where they can use some other information from our student information system to verify that identity. Uh, and then this card gets separated at that point. Uh, one card goes to somebody who does kind of the master accounting of what students we've released. And then the other portion goes to a runner who, uh, goes to get the student. So here's, you've got parents, parents, parents. Uh, the greeters kind of get them lined up and going in the right direction. Uh, and then the checkers are there to check those parents in. So, once they have that, a runner will get the student from the student holding area, uh, where you also have, uh, the... Oh, I think I left that one in the box. But the teachers are staying with the students to kind of manage them in that area. There's, we have some snacks stored and waters and, uh, entertainment for the students while they're there, waiting to get picked up. Uh, and then the runner here in this, the reunifier in this, uh, green shirt here, will get the student and bring them back to their parent. Uh, there'll be hugs and hearts. And then, uh, one more step on the way out is the exit accountant, uh, who will be there to make one more, make sure one more time that this is the right student with the right parent, and then to exit them from our system so that we know that that student's been released and no longer in the building. So I do also have a one minute and twenty-second video. Uh, this is the reunification drill that we did, uh, a few years ago now, uh, with the middle school. So I'll play this for you, hopefully. I will not play this for you, but I will pass around, uh, kind of the stuff that we have, uh, ready for when we're going to do these reunifications. And I'll just pass them around this way, if that's okay. So, and then if you notice on the badges, whenever people come and they get their vests and radios and badges, all of the badges, uh, everybody will have been trained at some point, but all of the badges, in case you forget, also have on the back of the, like, very brief list of what you're supposed to do. Let me... Okay, here we go.
On April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, Urbana Middle School's seventh graders conducted a reunification drill at Stone Creek Church to reunite students with their families after a simulated disaster at the school. As part of the drill, students were bused to the district's reunification site. Upon arrival, teachers led their students to their designated area inside and took attendance using class rosters. First aid will be available for any students with minor injuries. There will also be counselors on-site to assist students as needed. Prior to students and teachers arriving, the reunification team set up, briefed staff, and distributed supplies. Greeters were stationed outside of the entrance to guide parents and guardians as they arrived. They were given a form to fill out and directed to the check-in table where their identity was confirmed. Once checked in, parents and guardians proceeded to the waiting area, and their students' names appeared on a video board. This board signaled to staff inside the student waiting area to bring the student out to complete reunification. Once reunified with their students, parents and guardians proceeded to the checkout table where their identity was checked a final time before leaving the building with their student.
So again, uh, you might notice some of the names were a little different from what I had mentioned, but the process, again, very similar. So that is the updated, uh, Standard Response Protocol and USD Reunification Plan. Uh, the last, did you guys have any questions about either of those before I moved on? No? Okay. Oh.
So the reunification happened outside of the school?
Uh...
All the time?
Yeah, the reunifications pretty much always happen outside of the school. Uh, there is a evacuation site, that each school has a different evacuation site. Uh, but in order to process all the parents and students, the reunification happens somewhere else. Typically, if there's something that requires a reunification, now the school is a crime scene, fire scene, medical scene, and whatever's happening at the school. Uh, if it was, I think we had some tornadoes recently, so if it, there was a tornado at the school, you don't want people coming to the school. There's gonna be lots of people with lots of blinky lights at the school. You want to be somewhere else. So we take the students with buses to the reunification site.
How do the parents know where is the site?
Uh, they'll get notifications right at the beginning of where to go and what the basic instructions are of, like, traffic flow... and what the basic instructions are of like traffic flows and how to get in. So the last part I had to talk about was some of the security enhancements coming this next year. So Urbana Middle School, for the past year, I think, as we had alluded to earlier when Michelle was talking, we've been primarily screening students at door one with the metal detectors, which I think she said that sometimes there's, kids may be passing things to other doors. We've been doing random screenings at the other doors on kind of different days at different times, but it's impossible to catch everything. Starting next year, we will have metal detectors at both of the two main student entry doors every day for those students. We can do that because there's a third less students, so we can handle the throughput a little bit more, but we'll be able to get those through for each grade level. Also, we'll be using clear backpacks. Currently, with the metal detectors at the middle schools, we're having to do bag searches, which is incredibly time-consuming. So we're hoping the clear backpacks will be able to expedite that process. We will still be screening at door one, but only for visitors. So students won't be coming in through door one anymore. And then door one will also be redesigning the entryway. Right now, when you come in, the kiosk is kind of all the way to the right and back like 10 feet. So the kiosk is going to be getting moved right kind of in the front of the doors. So if people come in, they kind of have to go through that little security secured area when they come in.
I was going to add that the screening, students would still, if they arrived late. So that was one of the things that Michelle did mention. I know John said kind of maybe some of those weapons or things were passed to other grade levels. But I think what Michelle found is those were students who arrived late sometimes. And we don't have the staff to have two or three people at the door one metal detection all day because we need those people supervising throughout the building. So she has found that that has been one of the ways that a weapon or a knife or those brass knuckles or whatever came through is a student who arrived late and they weren't screened in the normal procedure that everyone else was screened. And if you remember, when we first started talking about metal detectors, the reason we had door one be our main area was that's where the eighth graders have to go through. And the majority of the students that we seem to have these concerns with were our eighth graders, which is why we positioned our main metal detection location to be at door one for the eighth grade students.
And then, so sixth grade next year, we are not going to be implementing metal detectors at this time. If things change in the future, that's always an option. But that hasn't been the majority of our issues at the middle school this year. We will be using still clear backpacks at the sixth grade center. So just make it a little easier to see things and have visibility on what's going on. So these, I think this will be a lot better for the middle school. The security changes, having screenings at both doors every day, a lot less opportunity for kind of passarounds and avoiding the metal detectors. It should have a lot better throughput and better visibility and safety for the staff and students in the school. So next steps for this is communications with parents and students, which we'll be working with the middle sixth grade administrators coming up this next year. We will have to purchase one additional metal detector for the visitor entrance now at door one and then working with staff on training and implementation. So that's all. If you guys have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Board members, any questions? Any questions for Matt?
I would ask you one, but I'm on the committee.
So what is your role in all this? What is your role and how do you participate here?
So my role is, I, let me back up a little bit. I was the SRO for four years from 2014 to 18. And then since then, I have been involved with supervising the SROs and been involved with the crisis committee. So that's really, that's really my role. I attended the same training they, they did as well as several others in that ASAM program. And you know, we had a great turnout. I will commend them. They, they kind of already knew what they were doing. I'm sure they picked up some things, but you know, from what I've seen, they're, they're doing what they need to do to keep these kids safe and to do things as seamless as possible. And I'm happy to be part of it and, and help. I too am for the Handle With Care program. I think that we do miss a lot, but you know, when, when Ms. Ivory Tatum and I exchange text messages and phone calls on the weekends and at wee hours of the night, sometimes our SROs do a good job looking daily at the reports and notifying their appropriate people about reports, but some are missed. So I'm for that. Crisis Go still scares the crap out of me when I get an alert for the fire drill that's going on and they're practicing because I'm like running to my car already, but I think that is excellent. You guys make my job pretty easy. You did tonight. But my main role is, is to be another type of liaison for the school district, for Ms. Ivory Tatum, through the police department. Having kind of been there and done that, I think that the relationship's working pretty well. And my role is to bounce ideas off and, and to give an opinion from a law enforcement perspective to the group.
Anyone, anyone else? Thank you, John. And thank you, Officer Bean.
Thank you. Good night.
That concludes our study topics for this evening. I'd like to take this moment to thank Anna Seaman, who's been running our cameras tonight and for most of our meetings, which I've neglected to thank her for, but we really appreciate everything she does here. There is no call for future special executive meetings. We will have one in a few minutes. Superintendent's report.
Okay. So I'll go through my regular superintendent report and then we have an additional information to share. So U of I athlete classroom visits. Students at King School and Yankee Ridge were greeted by athletes from the University of Illinois last week. The athletes read books to several classes at both schools and participated in their morning meetings. We want to give a shout out and thanks to the Schools Foundation for helping to coordinate this great opportunity and experience for our students at, at King and at Yankee Ridge. So here are a few of those photos. Track, I know Sid Lally has already shared a little bit about Kaylee and Javon and Arlen. So shout out to them and the whole UHS indoor track team. So we are just really, as Sid Lally said, that we're, we've seen broken records this year and new personal records for, for the students. So we are really looking forward to outdoor season, which starts like right now. So it's great. If you remember, our board member Laura Orr, her son Arlen is there. And so he was a great athlete in the middle school. He's kind of just kept it going through high school. So go Tigers. Congratulations to them and Coach Faroki and the whole team. Kindergarten registration is April 10th. So we've been sharing this every board meeting, but that is right around the corner now. So if you know of a family with a five-year-old turning five on before September 1st, please, please, please send them the information about kindergarten registration. So we just, it's always hard when we have those kindergartners that we don't know about, that we can't plan for, who just kind of show up on the first day of school. So as much as we can know where they're going to be and plan accordingly for enrollment and projections and FTE, that is very, very helpful. Broadway Unfine, so I am so excited. We're doing Moana Junior in Broadway Unfine at the middle school. So of course, board members are invited. April 10th at 6:30 on that Thursday is the, the public performance. There are going to, and on April 12th at 3:00 on a Saturday afternoon. There are performances that are going to happen during the day at the school, but those are for our elementary schools. So the elementary school students are invited over. I think they start at like fourth grade. So fourth and fifth graders get to come over as kind of like a little field trip to see the, see the performances. And then it's a great way for them to be excited about coming, you know, being a middle schooler and being able to participate on Broadway as a member of Broadway Unfine. So we've seen some fantastic plays. We, we had The Little Mermaid last year, Annie the year before that. And so we're really excited about Moana Junior. So join us at UMS. Boneyard Festival. So as you know, we are a district that is committed to fine arts, especially at our elementary level with our dedicated fine arts teams. So this weekend is the Boneyard Arts Festival. So we always make sure we have a presence there. So we brought, we brought back the Flash Mob last year. So we used to do that where the students have a location in downtown Urbana and they show up and they dance to a song and they just kind of do a public Flash Mob impromptu dance, dance performance. So that is outside the courthouse by the Lincoln Square side at 2:00 PM. Liel and Thomas Paine, oh, can you go back to, the Liel and Thomas Paine choirs will be performing at the Urbana Free Library at 3:00 on Saturday by the Bucie Mills Reading Space. There'll also be artwork from elementary students on display in the children's department at the Urbana Free Library during the regular business hours on Saturday. So we have all of our disciplines represented, dance and drama, music, and art. So go, congrats to our elementary fine arts teams and parents. Drop these times down so you can make sure you get your young people out there. It'll be fun. Hopefully, the weather is good. Dates, so tomorrow night, as we've mentioned, we have the King School, our last listening session. I do need to mention that we did not have the Ivanhoe meeting last night out in Ivanhoe. We canceled it on Friday just with the cold temperatures predicted, the wind. And at that time, they were predicting rain as well. So it didn't rain, but it was pretty cold to expect people to sit outside and eat and have conversation about strategic planning. So we're going to reschedule that for in May. And instead of getting their input before the planning, strategic planning, we'll be going back out there and taking the strategic plan as it has been written with, by the team, but sharing with them how they can be involved. Principal Valente already had some great ideas of how we can take the plan back out to the Ivanhoe community and give their thoughts on how we can improve outcomes for kids through the strategic plan. So we kind of shifted our focus a little bit when the weather didn't cooperate, but we still are planning to go out and engage that community. The mayoral recognition program. If you've not been included on an email yet from Kunita, you will be getting one because this is Mayor Marlin's last program recognition as her term as mayor of, as the mayor is ending. And so we really want this one to be one of the best yet. So April 16th will be at UHS. The 5:00 through 7:00 PM. I know Kunita has some surprises that they've been working on. So of course, board members are always welcome to attend those. And then we're opening online registration on May 1st for our returning students only. So new students, we have dates for you in July, but online registration will open for our current USD students on May 1st.
Also on tomorrow, the Yankee Ridge PTA is going to have their multicultural fair.
Oh, that's right.
At 6:00 o'clock, so.
That's right. Oh, I don't have the peace walk written down. What time is that? Oh, at King. Yes, the King Peace Walk, got it, yes. With the Park District. They usually walk from King to, to... Yep, yep, yep. Thank you, Tori. We missed those two dates. We'll put that, put those on there for when we send it out electronically tomorrow. And then we have one more piece of the, well, I don't know. Do you want to kind of mention that the FOIA's were completed? We had an update for the board around FOIA and OMA summaries. So John is actually going to kind of take the lead as our chief financial.
Yeah, while John's getting that up, they were a series of FOIA's were successfully processed as published in their agenda.
Yes. So as our CIO, he's really takes the lead on a lot of the FOIA responses with our attorney from Robinson Short. So he's going to take the lead and share just some updated information for the board.
Yep, thank you. And just a little background, I think you guys probably by now already know what a FOIA is, but this is a Freedom of Information request that you can send to any government agency to obtain records or information. One part people might not know, if you don't agree with the response from the FOIA request, an applicant has the option to refer, to submit a request for review with the Illinois Attorney General's Public Access Counselor Office. I bring that up because that's something I'll be referencing later. So there was a verbal board request for a summary of FOIA-related legal fees and staff time that have been incurred in the past year for repeated requests. So that was what we had asked our lawyers. We've actually had to retain a whole additional lawyer just to deal with some of these repeated requests that we've been getting. So this is the financial summary of legal fees for the lawyers, legal fees only. So the primary requister has been from Tom Schroder. I think we had three on this meeting's list. So of the total FOIA requests, we've gotten about 78.5% of those have been from Mr. Schroder. That accounts for $43,137 of legal fees. The other legal, the other FOIA requests that we've gotten for that same 12-month time period were about $11,800. So the total for that period was almost $55,000 for that February to February period. In addition, we had a large number of PAC requests for reviews from Mr. Schroder. Those accounted for an additional $25,800 in legal fees. So between the FOIA's and the request for review from the PAC, that accounted for approximately 85.3% of our total legal fees for those. In addition, we had one uniform grievance investigation that the board undertook voluntarily. That was an additional $11,200, bringing the total for legal fees for Mr. Schroder up to just over $80,000 for that 12-month period.
Board members, any questions or comments?
Yeah, so we also, we, we also accounted at the board request for staff time internally. So district staff at the school district, like most school districts, don't do hourly accounting of time. We don't fill people, so we don't have to. So to fulfill this request, I found all of the people who had worked on FOIA's in those 12-month periods and talked to them each individually and asked them for kind of what their estimate of the minimum amount of time that they spent on FOIA requests during that 12-month period was. We calculated those. We calculated those and we were able to take them times their hourly rate of pay for those individuals. And then we talked to some department heads for FOIA's that were processed within departments, mostly sped HR and the business department, to get a kind of low-ball summary for their people in their department. So the results of that were that there were 17 staff members who worked on processing those FOIA's between February 24 and February 25. The bulk of time was spent by Dr. Ivory Tatum, myself, and our FOIA officer Lori, who is great, and that added up to about 685 hours. A large quantity of that was for the text messages that we produced voluntarily after several back and forth with that. Approximately 73 hours were spent by other directors and the departments and the HR sped and business departments, taking that times everybody's individual hourly rates of pay. That accounted to an additional $60,000 of internal time, bringing the total for Mr. Schroeder up to approximately $140,000 for the district. To go over our request for review, just a summary of those. So we have not received, I don't recall receiving another request for review from the PAC in the time I've been here, but for this 12-month period, we received 18 from Mr. Schroeder. Six of those reviews are still open. The Public Access Counselor Office, for our FOIA's, we have a five-day, five-business-day time limit, and then we get another five days if we file an extension. They don't have that very reasonable five-day limit, so some of theirs are still open from months ago, but we haven't received any action from them on any of those so far, and we don't anticipate that. Nine of them were closed and warranted no further action by the PAC, which is in effect them dismissing it. One was closed voluntarily to limit additional legal fees. One was narrowed by the sender in a subsequent FOIA request, making the initial request not needed anymore. And then there was one OMA finding where the PAC did request that we had a board, board revote on a matter. OMA findings are, we track separately from FOIA. So overall, there've been no findings against the district from the PAC for FOIA's for that time period. And then, as I mentioned, there've been no PAC RFRs from anyone else in that time period, which is what we looked into.
Thank you for that report. If there's any other questions, the chair would entertain a motion to enter a closed session for the purpose of litigation against the district as published in our agenda after a 10-minute recess to clear the room.
A move that we go into recess?
Second.
Followed by executive session.
Followed by executive session. There will be no action afterwards.
And there'll be no action afterwards. Thank you, Tori. All right, roll call, please.
Member Hickson?
Here. Yes.
Member Baxley?
Yes.
Member Langendorf? Yes, Vice President Exum.
Yes.
President Palowski?
Yes.
Member Statton?
Yep.
And Member Jones?
Yes.
All right, we'll take about 10 minutes to clear the room, and then we'll begin our executive session.